Well, good evening. I would like to call to order this special meeting of the Newport News School Board for Thursday, August 26, 2021. On behalf of the School Board and the Superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the School Division. We have one member of the School Board who wishes to participate in our meeting electronically. As indicated in Board Policy BEE, electronic participation in meetings from a remote location, the Board Member must make such requests, cite the reason for remote attendance, and the Board must approve the request by a majority vote of the Board Members present. School Board Member John Ely has made such a request. Mr. Ely, would you like to please speak to the Board?
Good evening. I would like the opportunity to do virtual. Had death for my family and couldn't be there tonight, but wanted to still be in attendance virtually with you.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Hearing Mr. Ely's request, may I have a motion to approve his request to participate electronically?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow Mr. Ely to participate in tonight's Board Meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Best. Any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely? Well, Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, thank you. The COVID-19 pandemic, and now the Delta variant, continues to affect how we conduct business. Personal barriers are installed between members of the Board, and our staff and visitors are masked and socially distanced in the auditorium and in our overflow areas. We are taking steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff and the public. We value and appreciate your partnership. We will begin tonight's meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask, Mr. Harris, would you lead us in the pledge? Everybody stand, please. With that, now, we will move on to our audience with individuals. The School Board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via web form, email, or voicemail up to thirty minutes prior to our meeting to be included in the official meeting record. We have quite a few speaker cards tonight. We thank you for joining us in person. The Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments, not to react. Please understand that we are here to listen and consider your concerns. To accompany the number of speakers we have tonight, we're going to have a three-minute time limit, as we normally do. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining, and a red light indicates beep, and your time is up. To accommodate all the speakers we have tonight, we would ask, we were very, very grateful for you to comply with our three-minute time limit so we can accommodate as many speakers as we have. We have a thirty-minute limit on this session, absent the Board approval for extension of the time session. Therefore, as was mentioned earlier, we are going to call speaker cards first that come from residents, in the order in which they were received, and whether or not their comments are germane to the topic of the meeting. What I would ask that you do is, once you have finished speaking, because we have so many folks who are waiting to speak, if you would, please continue outside so that the next person will be able to come in and have a seat while they speak. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to call four cards at a time, to allow time for folks to get from outside up here. All right. So, the first card I have is Natalie Chamberlain, second Darren Pittman, third Never Yarbo, and fourth Gavin Grimm. And please begin whenever you're ready.
Good evening. I am Reverend Natalie Chamberlain. My pronouns are she, her, and hers, and I'm the pastor of Hilton Christian Church. As a congregation, we strive to be radically welcoming and inclusive. Our denomination, the Christian Church Disciples of Christ, strives to be a movement for wholeness in a fragmented world. We choose welcome to welcome all as God has welcomed us. It would be easy to address you tonight on theological terms, but the issue before us is not religious or theological. The question tonight has to do with the safety and well-being of children and youth entrusted to the Board's care. This community, as represented by this Board, has a responsibility to care for every student, no matter what we might think of any individual's race, creed, color, gender, or gender identity. As a citizen of Newport News, a pastor, a parent, and a grandparent, I expect that this Board would read and understand the policy before us tonight. This is about protecting vulnerable children so that they can get the best education possible. That is really a simple objective. If you need a Judeo-Christian foundation for doing the right thing, let it be Jesus' words. Jesus was asked, "Master, which is the great commandment in the law?" Jesus said unto him, "Thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, and with all thy soul, and with all of thy mind; this is the first and great commandment, and the second is like unto it. Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." On these two commandments, hang all the law and the prophets. Every other text of our scripture needs to be viewed through the lens of this scripture, since Jesus Himself told us that this was the most important commandment. There is nothing that supersedes it, not any verse taken out of context, not any denominational or individual teachings, and not individual likes or dislikes. I hope that you will do the right thing and implement the state policy and protect the vulnerable students who should be able to depend on you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
My name is Darren Pittman, and I am a proud parent of two young daughters. I truly believe that we should be protecting every child. I believe that. What we did a week ago here in this room should actually stand. There are policies and procedures when it comes to voting. I believe it is wrong to allow politicians to get involved in this matter, but we're here. We're here. If you pass this agenda that has been political, you will allow it to trample upon the constitutional rights of parents like me. Protect every child. That doesn't mean just one group. That means every child. If my daughter goes to the restroom, who's protecting her? Are we now going to put guards in the restroom to ensure that a male does not? I mean, this is wrong. This is wrong. We have enough issues in our high schools and our middle schools. There are several distractions, several. Our teachers are dealing with enough. Enough. They're dealing with vaccination, dealing with masks. They're dealing with enough. You have amazing policies already in place. Stick with those policies. Don't allow chaos in our community. We know there's people, they're coming from all over the place. This is our city. The city of Newport News, this is our city. We will not allow it. I don't care where it is coming from, it need to go back from where it came.
Thank you.
My name is Never Yarbo. I think I've seen you guys one time before. I believe everyone should be treated fairly and with respect, but when it relates to locker rooms and bathrooms, gender has never been inclusive. Male and female genders have always been separated in these issues. By definition, transgender is a different gender category. There you go. Male, female, transgender. Genders have always been separated when it comes down to locker rooms and bathrooms. It's always been this way. I can get a preach to you, but you're going to hear that all night long. We cannot escape the fact that science, the science behind the transgender phenomenon is primarily based on faith or their belief system. What is going to happen when a pedophile pretends to be a transgender and enters a locker room or bathroom and attacks a child? I know statistically, they say this is rare, but one child hurt is one child too many. It will happen. It will happen, whether it be now, five, or ten years from now, it will take place. Perhaps the pedophile doesn't attack physically, but takes pictures clandestinely. Can you promise that the children will be completely safe? What in this policy changed since the last time it was voted on? What new revelation was brought out? I don't think anyone should be bullied, male, female, or transgender. That also includes the Newport News School Board. Thank you for your time.
My name is Gavin Grimm. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name may be recognized from the recent news of a landmark civil rights case headed by the ACLU where my school, Gloucester County Public Schools, banned me from using the boys' bathroom back in 2015. We enjoyed a recent victory, and this morning, it was announced that the School Board is responsible for $1.82 million in restitution to my lawyers. I am speaking to you to make it very clear that discrimination is an open and shut conversation here in the Fourth Circuit in Virginia, and it's very expensive. First and foremost, nowhere in the nation, this nation, Europe, the world, the rest of the world, where trans people have not only been using the bathrooms where they should be using them, which is where they feel comfortable using them for decades, but there are countries that have had model policies similarly affirming for a very long time, and this spike in crime has simply not materialized. It's not true, it is a bad faith argument, there is no leg to stand on. Furthermore, if somebody is a criminal, such as someone who might want to harm children or sexually assault women in a bathroom, a sign is not going to stop them. And if your argument is seriously that an evil pedophile is going to look at the sign on the door and say, "Well, if I just, you know, I can go in there, I'm waiting for a loophole because I'm clearly a law-abiding pedophile," ridiculous. Ridiculous argument, which holds no water whatsoever. Predators are still predators, and the crime of entering a bathroom under false pretenses to harm people is still a crime. People are discussing this as if this is not going to be treated as a crime. It's still a crime. So I will say that any remaining resistance from the School Board on passing this model policy, which has reported wonderful results across the country where these policies have been enacted, in school performance, student satisfaction, student happiness, academic performance overall, there has not been any issues in any of these places, these crimes have not materialized. And so, any further resistance to affirming the transgender young people in this county is an act of aggression to these students and an act of political preservation by members of the School Board who might fear retribution from a community who is not ready to accept the truth yet. I implore every one of you to take into consideration how fully illegal it is, as decided by the Fourth Circuit, as decided by many other cases across this country, to discriminate against transgender people on the basis of them being transgender. And I implore you to take care of the students that you've been tasked with taking care of and respect their rights, and not force transgender students into a place of discrimination and segregation. Thank you very much.
Our next four speakers are going to be Carolyn Cox, Mary Edwards, Cheryl Parker, and Matthew DeGrave.
My name is Carolyn Cox, and I live here in Newport News with my boyfriend Cody, and he's in the Marine Corps. So we are going to be here for the next five years, at least, probably ten. Now, when I have children, they will go through Newport News Public Schools. They will be experiencing these policies that are enacted. I want my kids to grow up and learn in an environment that is accepting and welcoming, no matter what type of person they grow into. If my child is trans or non-binary, I want them to know, excuse me, I want them to be in an environment where they are afforded the same opportunities as their cisgender peers. And if my children are cisgender, I want them to know that different doesn't mean bad or immoral. When I was in high school, I watched one of my best friends, a trans man, be berated, made fun of, discriminated, called an abomination of God when he was fourteen years old, in front of his own school board. Now, this is not an experience that I want my children to live through, nor do I want them to think that it is acceptable. I'm a woman. I don't have an issue with trans women being in the bathroom, because I go in there, I use the bathroom, I wash my hands, which is probably more than I can say for some people, and then I leave. Trans people do the exact same thing. Trans people have been using the right bathroom for a very long time. There simply is no evidence that there is a problem, and trans rights are human rights. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Brown and members of the School Board. My name is Marie Edwards. I am the Development Officer for the Family Foundation of Virginia headquartered in Richmond, Virginia. I am speaking on behalf of Dr. Todd Gackey, Director of Government Relations for the Family Foundation. The Family Foundation advocates for the protection of the hearts and minds and bodily privacy of all children in public schools. I'm here tonight to urge you to reject the model policies for the treatment of transgender students put out by the Virginia Department of Education, as well as the policy change suggested by the Virginia School Board Association that references the Virginia Code Section Public policies and school policies must be created in a way that protects the bodily safety of every child, as well as the constitutionally protected free speech of students and teachers, which promotes and respects parental authority. The Virginia Department of Education's model policies accomplishes absolutely none of those outcomes. Instead, they jeopardize the bodily safety and privacy of young girls. They would force adults to speak untruths and violate their freedom of conscience. For example, two teachers, Tanner Cross and Peter Vlaming, were removed from their teaching positions for speaking the truth. However, Tanner Cross was reinstated after winning his court case. Peter Vlaming was fired and never reinstated. These policies also undermine parental authority by permitting the schools to withhold information about their children. Let me give you some additional encouragement for rejecting these policies. The founding Freedoms Law Center, which is the legal arm of the Family Foundation, filed a lawsuit challenging the deficiencies of the model policies, and we sought an injunction. While the court did not issue a temporary injunction, there were some very important clarifications that were made. First, the judge referred to these guidance policies, not, these are guidance policies. We have to take him at his word. These policies are not mandatory for every school division to adopt. Second, the attorney representing the Virginia Department of Education clarified, is that my time?
Yes, that is your time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Mark Van Linton, Cheryl Parker, Matthew DeGrave. My next three cards are Mark Van Linton, Cheryl Parker, and Matthew DeGrave.
I'm Matthew DeGrave, home of our official, just come up.
I'm Cheryl Parker.
Cheryl Parker, okay. Let's give Mark Van Linton just a few more seconds if we can find him. Okay, while we're waiting for Mr. Linton, Cheryl Parker, would you please come forward?
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Parker, and I'm a native of Newport News, and I represent here tonight four generations of family and children in the Newport News school system. I'd like to start with some scripture. Genesis 127, "God created man in His own image, and in His image He created male and female." Deuteronomy 31:12, "Assemble the people, men and women, children, in your town, so they may hear and learn and fear the Lord your God, and be careful to observe the words of His law." This is God's word. It's the same today, tomorrow, and forever. This is a resolution awarded to my grandfather, who's passed away, D. Howell. It was given to him by the Senate of Virginia. He was a man that loved children. Representative Bobby Scott would know him. He had a mascot for the Democratic Party. Jack was the celebrity. My grandfather also was riding with Thomas Downing in a Surrey pulled by horses, and the Jesse Ratley as well. In fact, at the passing of my grandfather, Thomas Downing spoke at his funeral, attended by hundreds. Our family has supported the school system's decisions for years, and our family, however, cannot support such a bill as this. And at this time, we must stand. We must stand on God's holy word, and I stand here. I stand here today. My mother is out here of eighty-eight years old. My daughter is sitting here forty years old. A lifetime resident of Newport News, my mother attended Hilton Elementary, Warwick High School, myself Saunders Elementary and Ferguson High School, my daughter Haydenwood Elementary and Menchfield High School, and her children currently at Yates and Menchfield High School. I cannot accept the concept that possibly my nine-year-old granddaughter or her sixteen-year-old sister would share a restroom with any male who identifies as a female or vice versa. I'm also very proud to be an American who lives in a city where so much history was born. God created us all in His image. I will never apologize for who my father in having created me to be. I respectfully request that this bill that is up for vote will not pass as an American voter, a grandmother of children attending Newport News schools, but most importantly, a child of God. I ask you each to seek and pray to God, and I'm certain he will hear you. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Van Linton?
One God, two sexes, three aspects of human condition. Based on these three facts, I intend to let this Board know that you have voted correctly the first time around when you failed to adopt Policy JP at your August 17 regular meeting. Furthermore, there's no reason to reconsider, nor to have another vote. One, God says in Genesis, He created them after His image, male and female. Furthermore, He made them Adam and Eve, and I would add and point out that He did not make them Adam and Steve. You as leaders in this decision-making process have no need to coddle those who would complain that their particular sex is not represented by present policy. Two, when a child questions what sex they are, the adults in their life should take that opportunity as a teachable moment. I like one comment made at the regular meeting on August 17. The speaker comment was, "If children aren't sure, have them check inside their genes." I believe that it is no mistake to use the one word in double meaning to suggest that one follow the scientific method. Three, the human condition is three parts, physical, mental, spiritual. One cannot separate or eliminate any part thereof without serious consequences. The Mayo Clinic says adolescents and adults with gender dysphoria before gender reassignment might be at risk of suicidal ideation, suicide attempts, and suicide. Focus on the Family, a nonprofit group, has discovered that most of the children who have troublesome issues with their sexuality will outgrow it in five years. The Mayo Clinic concluded in their study, after gender reassignment, suicide risk might continue. I hope that I have demonstrated that our society has effectively created a non-solution to a non-problem that we should have left alone. Similarly, this School Board should let the original vote stand. You should not reconsider the matter, and if you persist, then make the vote unanimously fail. Thank you.
Yes, Matthew DeGrave?
Good evening, Newport members. Thank you for reconsidering this motion from the state. My name is Matthew DeGrave. I am first and foremost a parent of a student in the Newport News City Public School System. I am also a member of a group called the Southeastern Virginia Atheist Skeptics and Humanists, who have membership all over Hampton Roads, as well as in Newport News. Some of our members are even transgender or have transgender children in the school system. I'm here tonight to ask you guys to please reconsider this vote. The gentleman that just spoke spoke of suicide. That often happens because the people are not accepted for who they are, for the gender that they choose to display on the outside. There's nothing in this model legislation or guidance that's been put out that says that you have to lie, that you have to do anything separate than you're doing from now just to respect the boundaries of the student. If the student displays that they come from a family that is not accepting of them, the best thing to do in those situations is just to continue as you are. Let everything go. Let them express who they are in school and as they are, because this will provide a less stressful environment for them. All children in the school system spend a lot of time in school. They grow into adolescents and into adults in the school system. It's the time when they find out about themselves and who they are and who they are going to be as adults. Why block this legislation that just tries to help these students along? Yes, some have mentioned about the school bathrooms and stuff like that, and the non-instances that come out, but to be honest, do you guys post security guards in the bathrooms right now? Do you think a perpetrator of a violent crime or molestation is going to stop at the door and be like, "Oh, I'm not that right gender, so I'm not going to go in there"? Not to mention, as a humanist, and I hate to bring, I don't hate to bring this up because I'm bringing it up, churches often suffer the same problem. What do we do in those situations? We should be bringing those people to justice. We should be arresting those people and reprimanding those people as it occurs. I'm really, really sincere when I ask you guys to please reconsider this vote. I understand that people are upset about it. I understand that people are upset about it. Some people may feel like it makes them feel icky or weird, or they don't know how to handle the situation. But there's lots of studies that show that when you have transgender and LGBT children in a loving and caring environment, that they are less likely to commit suicide. When you accept people for who they are and how they express themselves, we provide a less stress-free environment. There's nothing in this legislation that says that cisgender children are going to be affected in any way. I read through the model guidance. I didn't see anything in there that was crazy or outlandish that we couldn't support. Please support changing your decision from last week and this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Kleinman, Bill Haines, and J.R. Gurley?
Hi, I'm Sarah Kleinman. I spoke last week. I am still a parent of a Newport News Public School student. Last week, this school board seemed concerned about the idea that religious parents who didn't accept their child's gender identity would have their rights infringed upon. I'm a secular mother. It would be absurd for me to argue that every time my non-religious child gets invited to pray at the flagpole at that event, or gets invited to join Fellowship of Christian Athletes, that somebody from the school should call me and tell me my rights are being infringed upon. Similarly, as a teacher, I think it would be absurd if I called a conservative Muslim student's parents and said, "Your child took off their headscarf", or called a Jewish student's parent and said, "Your child had pork barbecue for lunch." This isn't what we do as a school system. Children come to school every day and express an identity different from what their parents know about. That's just the nature of growing up and being a child. The board completed parents' rights with the rights of one faith, a certain sect of Christianity. These protections that the VDOE set as model guidelines are in line with the best practices. They're endorsed by the VDOE and the Department of Education. And there should... We should be in line with them as a public school with these secular organizations. You can't protect just one religious belief. It would get crazy. In this case, this is just one particular branch of Christianity we're favoring over everybody else. That's why we have a secular public school system. That's kind of the whole point. Trans and non-binary kids deserve protection. Our responsibility as a school is to protect children, not their parents. As a parent, I want my child to be protected by y'all in school, even if that goes against what I had imagined my child's life to be. The data is clear that these best practices help protect kids. That should be our goal in Newport News Public Schools, keeping all kids safe. Thank you.
Bill Haines?
Dear members of the Newport News School Board, first, I'd like to express my thanks and appreciation to all of you for what you do for our city schools and for the community. I know it's a tough job, and I'm sure you have many challenges. My name is Bill Haines. I think y'all know that. I grew up in Newport News, and I was part of the public school systems for many years. I graduated at Menchfield High School in the year of nineteen eighty. It was a lot different world back then, and I believe it's changed quite a bit. But I believe for the most part that people in our society are very kind. They're very honorable, and they're tolerant of everyone, no matter whether they... what they believe in or what they stand for, whether it be politics, lifestyles, religion, or even where they stand in their beliefs on sexual preference. This is a land of freedoms that people understand and respect. I think no different about our public school system, where there's already standards in place and policies to protect all the students and faculties and keep them from any discriminatory problems. But this policy that's being... that's being voted on for adoption to our school system goes beyond the realm of reasonable standards by stepping over the line of human rights and beliefs. It does so by imposing the will of a small segment of society, which is about .01%, upon the rest of the community at large. It forces people to adjust their life and partake of things that they neither want nor truly believe in. I would like someone... It would be like someone forcing you to shop at a certain grocery store, or to go to a certain doctor, or to attend to even a certain church that you're not interested in, or maybe you're strongly opposed to. If things were left as they were, I really don't believe there would be an issue from either side of the aisle. I believe the politics of a few are trying to dictate things that most members of society are truly not even interested in doing. In the end, I think moving ahead with these new policies will do more harm than good. The backlash it will create will cause division and more unrest. I pray that you will stick with your original decision to oppose these new guidelines and to let people maintain their God-given choices and freedoms that they enjoy. Thank you once again for serving our communities. God bless you.
At this time, before Mr. J.R. Gurley comes up, I must inform the board that the thirty-minute allotted time has expired. And so in order to continue public comment, we need a motion to continuance. May I have a motion to continue public comment for an additional thirty minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to continue comments past the thirty-minute timeline.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a second on Ms. Ammon. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searl's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, so at this time, what I'd like to do, so that we can make room for our speakers that are going to be coming in, is everyone who has had an opportunity to speak, and I'm going to ask if you would be so kind as to give up your seat now, so that we can allow these... this next set of speakers to come in. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the cards, so that hopefully folks outside can hear their name, that you'll be in this flight of speakers. So our first one's going to be Mr. J.R. Gurley, then Irene Depot, Jordan Gray, Christina Robinson, Sharon Hicks, Jennifer Kleipis, Jessica Cole, Ben Barrow, Jayden Vandiver, and David Wilson. So that will be our next flight of speakers. So those speakers, if they can make their way into the auditorium now, there's... there's seats for you. And Mr. Gurley, yes, please come... please come forward. Before Mr. Gurley speaks, we do have a sign. If you would please put your sign away. Thank you. Please, Mr. Gurley, come up and forward.
Good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Chairman, School Board members, and to the rest of the citizens of Newport News. As was already... as already obvious, my name is J.R. Gurley. I am a pastor in the city for over twenty-one years. I'm a resident of the city, and I'm also concerned. And so before I begin... Well, I'm already beginning, but before I get deep into what I wanted to say, I did want to point out a couple of things, because I think one of the reasons we're back here again today is because we're being kind of fed a steady diet of misinformation. A couple of the speakers who spoke before me stated some things that were glaringly untrue. While I sat there in my seat, I used my device and I Googled the amount of instances that people are actually assaulted in bathrooms by members of the opposite sex. And then I localized that search again by asking Google how many times it has happened with students, so just not adults, but actually students. And I find numerous. So the claim that this does not occur is actually... it's a grand distortion of the truth, but I just wanted to point that out. Other than the... Other than that, there is a glaring... There's a litany of constitutional inconsistencies in this policy that is being handed down by the Virginia Department of Education. And I'll just name five just to begin with. Number one, it does, as the gentleman said, that no one has to lie. Actually, the policy does encourage the schools, faculty, and staff to lie, to outright deceive the parents by going so far as to refer to the student by their preferred gender at school and keep corresponding with the parents by their birth or known gender. It also... Number two, it opens the door to the state punishing parents as abusers. There's vague language, and by the way, it's direct language. This is direct language that encourages the school system to keep parents in the dark. Number two, it uses vague languages that describes parents possibly as abusers simply because they are non-affirming. Number three, it requires schools to jeopardize the privacy and the physical safety of students. My fourth issue with it is that it mandates all school employees and students must use transgender pronouns or face punishment, or some type of action or recourse for not doing it. Imagine the hostile type of environment this makes for the teacher when corresponding with the students, or when corresponding with the parents. They're walking on pins and needles already. They're already dealing with issues. And the fact that they have a conversation with the parent that... And they may reveal by accident the gender of the student, they could be fired. It is unsolvable beyond the power of language to... for me to explain that this policy does not protect. It exploits, and it does not protect all children. I would urge you to let the vote from last Tuesday stand, and I would urge you to move in such a manner as to protect all of our children, just not some. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Irene Depot, and I'm a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother. And I'm really appalled of this even coming up for the second time. This is unnecessary. But I want to let you know I have a handicapped child. And I saw perfect coming together the school system to help us all out. The system works. If we work the system, it works. We don't need to change. And I'll tell you, they do help the children. That's what we need to do. We need to help our children. And if there is a problem with the bathroom, I saw at Kroger, they said, "You're in a sex bathroom." If that's a problem, I don't know. But I do know males need to go to the men's bathroom, women to the women's bathroom. And I'll tell you, there's a big lawsuit going on with the Boy Scouts. Look it up. What happens if we let this go? This could be a problem here in Newport News. God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan Gray?
Good evening, Newport News Public School Board. It's good to see you again. Unfortunately, I'm no longer an employee with you. I've moved on to James City County Public Schools, but have been an employee here, and so I know the system very well, and I've spoken to you before, and I'm honored to be here. Mr. Hunter was chairman. He often said the phrase, "Great things are happening in Newport News." I'm sorry to say, sir, they're not anymore. In a school system that's faced with high teacher shortages, and by the way, all kinds of bus shortages and all kinds of other things, what are we doing here tonight? We're arguing over whether we're going to adopt a policy that clearly violates constitutional authority of parents. I'm telling you right now, it's a shame and disgrace that our leadership, especially Dr. Parker, has not been able to achieve the focuses to keep our division moving in the right direction and heading in the right way. And it's even more hurting to me, as a former employee and a proud citizen of this community, and a proud former employee of Newport News. I loved my time here. As you all know, I was proud to be an achievable dream. And I... I can tell you this. Every teacher that I know strives to make sure that no student is discriminated against ever in our buildings. And if we catch a student bullying another student, we act swiftly to demand that that student is disciplined appropriately and that their parents are informed. Let me say this. If the school decides to step in and override the authority of parents is acting outside the constitutionality of the authority you have been bestowed upon by the Commonwealth of Virginia. Let me just say this as well. I think it's atrocious that we've heard in the last week the revelation that certain school board members have been pressured by elected officials from across the state. If you are one of those school board members that received one of those phone calls, and you accepted that, and you have been cornered into pressuring a meeting out of the blue in just a matter of a week's time, I am disappointed in you and farly ashamed. I am... I'm just shocked. And to be honest with you, the voters in this community will hold you accountable. You can make sure of that, and if I were you, I'd be worried about my reelection. So here's what I want to say to you. Stand on the vote that you made. Last week, you met and five to one decided that this policy was not right for Newport News. Do not be cornered by Dr. Parker. Do not be cornered by his administration that he thinks is going to push this ideology. Stand with teachers in this division who know how to protect our kids and have been doing a fantastic job long before Dr. Parker ever showed up. I'm going to say that in love and compassion as a person who cares about this community and was a proud employee of Newport News. I'm unashamed of what I've done here and how I've stood for students. And I need you, as a school board, to also stand with students. Vote no on this policy.
Christina Robinson?
Hello, everyone. I am Christina Robinson. I am a single mother, taking care of my children. I have three children. My son is eighteen, graduated from Williamsburg. But I have my seventeen-year-old that graduates from Heritage High School. And I have my thirteen-year-old that attends Criticism, which is now doing Virtual Virginia. So I haven't seen that. I, as a mother, don't agree with changing the way the restrooms are. The reason being is not only for protection, because, yes, we have posers, and we have a lot of predators that come into the school system because they're not registered. And the reason they're not registered is because they haven't been caught. So that's dangerous for children and adults as well, period, first and foremost. Second, we have kids that would be free to go into the bathroom and bully any child that they want to, because there's no specification as to whether a teenage boy or adolescent child can go into or can go into the restroom of an opposite sex without being questioned, "What are you doing in that restroom?" And anything can happen. They can go into the restroom, and they can abuse children, bully children. It can be within each other, not just adults. It's just across the board. It just opens up too many things for children to not feel safe. We don't send our kids to school to, you know, have to worry about what restroom they might want to use. We send them to school to learn. Me personally, the way I was raised, you go to school for education. You don't go to school for friends. You don't go to school to be disrespectful. You go to do what you're supposed to do. You learn, you get your education, and you go on. Because at the end of the day, using the bathroom shouldn't be a main concern. It should be making sure our kids are educated well and properly and safely. This goes for our children and our staff members in the school as well, not just the kids. It's for everybody overall. The restrooms need to stay the way that they are, and that's my personal opinion, and that's how I feel. My kids agree, all of my children, and my family as well.
Sharon Hicks?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My eighty-seven-year-old godmother said once to me, "If America is destroyed, it will be destroyed within." Tonight, you are in the public square. You made a decision once, stand by it again. We are not only asked today to wear masks on our faces, but now we're being told to put blindfolds over our hearts and our eyes. Stand by your decision. How did we get here? How did we get here? Our media has gone from reporting the news to giving their opinions. We've been told that our laws that have been placed since the foundation of this country are not only being interpreted, but being changed. And having faith in God, you are told that you are a threat or worse than that, part of a hate group. I'm here tonight not because I hate transgenders, even that I deny their existence. I do, however, take issue with this, indoctrinating children and not giving their parents a voice. I do take issue with excluding parents' voices. I do take issue with you not being to stand by your own convictions. Sometimes those who shout Sometimes those who shout tolerance are the most intolerant. Sometimes those who proclaim, "We want inclusiveness," are the ones that want exclusion. America was built on the bu- the blood and backs of many groups of people, not just a few. We can burn buildings, tear down monuments, and march until the ends of the earth, but no man, no school board, no Congress, and no president can regulate the heart of a man. In closing, I'll leave you with this, this is my opinion. Your gender is predetermined by God, your rights by the laws of the land, and your opinion is simply that, your opinion. When the dust settles, the lights turn off. Tonight, school board members, ask yourself this question. What will you be remembered in history for? When they turn the page on what you do in this room tonight? I love my country, and I love what you represent. God bless you and God bless America.
Jennifer Kleppis?
Hello, um, I'm Jennifer Kleppis, um, and I am a proud member of Newport News Public Schools. I have been for over five years, I started my teaching career here. I'm an eighth-grade English teacher, and I love that we brought up the idea of history because I teach at the newly-named Ella Fitzgerald Middle School. And you know why that's important? Because it was originally named after J.M. Dozier, who was a school board member who initially voted against bringing all students of all colors into schools. So I want you to keep that in mind, thank you. Many students in our community identify as part of the LGBTQ plus community. It is our responsibility to keep all of those students safe, especially those who are at a higher risk of bullying, harassment, hate crimes, and suicide. Want to share some important facts with you guys that I've researched, and I'm going to cite for you too, so you know that they came from actual credible sources. So according to the national, the Trevor National Survey on LGBTQ youth, um, from their survey for mental health in 2021, fifty-two percent of transgender and non-binary youth have considered attempting suicide in the past year. Have you guys ever had a student sit in your room, and then the next day they're not there because they killed themselves the night before? Because I have. And that sucks for the teacher, the school, and the kids. That's half of every, of all our kids are thinking about it every single day. Seventy-seven percent experienced anxiety, and seventy percent experienced depression. In addition, in the GLSDN, that 2019 National Survey, which was on school climate and gender, eighty-two percent of transgender students avoided bathrooms, and sixty-nine percent avoided locker rooms because they felt unsafe or uncomfortable. They avoided the bathrooms and the locker rooms. Bathrooms, this, this is more than just about bathrooms, and it blows my mind because these students are not the ones doing the bullying and doing the harassing. As somebody who's in a classroom and in a school every single day, even teaching there and online at the same time, I've never seen a transgender student harass or bully another student, I've seen students make fun of them, just putting that out there. Eighty-three percent have been victimized based on gender, seventy-seven have experienced anti-LGBTQ discrimination. That's about equality, got that, okay. Forty-three percent have missed school in the past month because of safety concerns, and twenty-four percent had changed schools. Transgender students, not cisgender students. LGBTQ students who experienced victimization or discrimination also have lower GPAs. It's hard to stay focused on school and do your best when you're constantly being victimized. LGBTQ youth have a one-hundred-and-twenty percent chance of experiencing homelessness. So where we keep saying that we're leaving parents in the dark, we're not leaving them in the dark, we're protecting children from being put out on the street on their own. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Jessica Cole?
Hi, um, my name is Jessica Cole, and I'm a very proud parent of a rising senior at Menchville High School, go Marks. Um, I'm also the very proud parent of a transgender youth. Uh, my son came out to me when he was twelve. Um, he didn't come out to school, um, to his counselor for another two years. Um, he was very lucky, uh, his teachers at Menchville High School have been amazing. He has a great group of friends, and hi- his immediate family is all very, very supportive. Not every kid is that lucky. I, I, I can say that, that my son is incredibly lucky, but not every kid is, is like that, you know? A lot of these kids don't have parents at home that would just love them for exactly who they are. You know, it, being a teenager is so hard, being in high school and trying to figure yourself out, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thirty-eight and still have a hard time sometimes figuring out what is right for me, but you know, it, us not protecting these kids at school, it's, it's wrong, you know, I, I'm having a, a hard time right now sharing how I feel with you because, you know, I've, I've, I've sat there and looked at my kid when my kid said, you know, "I don't want to go to school tomorrow. I don't want to go to school because, you know, I couldn't go to the bathroom today." I, I go pick up my kid from school so I can make sure that they can go to the bath, they don't go in the bathroom at school, even though they were allowed to go to the bathroom, that was a special bathroom that's like way over by the nurses that, that nobody uses. My kid doesn't want to go in the opposite, they just want to feel like they can be themselves, that's it. And that it's okay, and that no one can say that they aren't allowed. It, these kids aren't fighting to get into a bathroom, they're fighting to exist. They're, they're fighting to, to be just like everybody else, that's all they want. So I'm, I'm asking you, my kid only has one year left, but please protect my child. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Ben Barrow?
Hey, good evening, my name's Ben Barrow, I am actually a local pastor here in Newport News, but I'm here on behalf of my children, I'm just speaking from my heart. I ju- I'm an encourager, so I just want to encourage you all tonight, the vote that was passed last week, that was great. I'm, I'm big on outreach, loving people, encouraging people. I will eat next to you at a table, no matter what your background is, anybody that knows me, that's how I roll. So what you did last week, stand with that, I mean, I come from a biblical worldview, and hopefully some of y'all do too as well. But you know in your hearts what's right, we know what's right, and I think about that scripture that just says, "Let your yes be yes and your no be no," you know? So if you've already stood on that, you know, I just say, and I know some of my terms here, uh, keep it one hundred, you know? Do what God's calling you to do, don't let anybody get in the way of that, just continue to press on. I have four children that are all in Newport News Public Schools, two of them are just starting, and I really don't like to, to get into the politics, I like to just say, "Jesus loves you, man, he wants to change your life." He changed my life from drugs, alcohol, crazy life. So I'm big on love, forgiveness, caring for people. And so I have people that are friends of mine that do have some of these backgrounds that we're talking about. But I feel in my heart, I have to stand for what is right when it comes to a biblical worldview. And so my children, I don't want them to be in a place where they're not sure what is happening around them, and they're not at that age yet where they can make their choices for themselves to this degree. So I just want to encourage you, keep on doing what you're doing, don't let this stop you tonight. Sometimes people try to persuade and try to do things, you know, I'm in the ministry, and I know even in church, sometimes in life, but what you're doing, stand on it, don't change, be who you are, and God will bless you for it. So thank you, just let me come up here.
I want to thank all the citizens who have made room, so we do now have some room, uh, here for our speakers to come in. I'm going to call the next, uh, ten speakers, and if you hear your name, if you would, uh, please make your way in. So Jaden Vandiver, David Wilson, Natalie Ashby, Russ Harper, Florence Einbohr, Michelle, uh, Michael Battle, Tanisha Press, Joy Kent, Hialeah Holmes, Kishana Smallwood, and Autumn Cuevas. So those, those folks, if you would, uh, make your way into the auditorium now, it'd be, uh, great. And so there are our next three speakers, give them a minute. Okay, give them a minute, okay, we'll, we'll give them a minute to make their way in. We have Jaden Vandiver, why don't you come on up, please?
Hello, my name is Jaden. As a Warwick High School student, I don't think this is right at all. Because if you think about it, you already have a bullying problem. What's you putting a sign up to stop someone from going in there and bullying a child again into somewhere that they can't, like an adult really couldn't go in there and be like, "Oh, stop this, it's going to be a more big problem because it's a secluded area, and it's going to be multiple kids on one child coming at them for who they are." I don't have a problem with anybody who wants to be transgender or another thing, I see it all the time, it's not my thing. They do them and I do me, but I don't want people to get bashed for who they want to be or what they're trying to be. Like, it's kind of like, it's being pushed on the kids, like, social media pushes all of this. I'm not going to say that it doesn't, because I'm on social media every day, I see the things that happen, I know what happens. Like, I have friends, I have a friend that killed herself because of the situation like this, like, it was being pushed that she didn't, I mean, she had to be in the group with the transgenders, where she just wanted to be who she wanted to be with everybody else, she just wanted to change and think that would be better, but no, people didn't want her to change, they wanted her to stay how she was. And that's not something that should be a problem. If you want to change, you should be able to change, you shouldn't, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be something that's so attention-based or opinion-based. If you see the facts, you see the facts, but if not, then you don't see what the truly, the, the thing is for what it has to be, like, I don't need, like, back to the thing, I don't need a, a older person going in with my sister, and she's six. I don't need that, I don't need to no- not know that she's going to be safe in a bathroom where she has to take care of her business. Or if an older man or older woman went in the bathroom with me, that's just weird, no one wants that. I mean, it's okay that someone older is in the bathroom, but that's just like a different gender, no, you don't need that. You don't, that shouldn't be something that's happening. Or something that should happen, it's just stupid, I should say. It's, I don't mean to bash on your opinion or what y'all did, because I'm, I wasn't here, but still, it's not right at all. If, say if one of your children went in there, and then a grown man was in there watching your child or something, I'm not saying that it ki- it, it didn't happen, or it could happen, but it might happen, you never know. Things happen all the time for, I guess that people say, reasons, but that shouldn't happen for any reason at all. It's just how things go, but that's not how this should go. If it worked before, don't change it, if it kept working, don't change it, thank you.
Next card is David Wilson.
School board, um, first off, I want to start by thanking you for what you do. Um, I do have my respect, you know, I don't envy your position right now, um, but the truth of the matter is, I let me say this right, I'm not here as a politician, as a politician, they, everybody will tell you, that boy can deliver a speech. I don't have a speech right now, I'm not here as a politician, I'm here as a father, I'm here as a son, I'm here as a person who grew up in this city of Newport News my entire life, with thirteen generations of my family coming from this city, right here in Newport News. I just watched a Warwick High School student tell y'all that he doesn't want this in his schools, that's a student. My children box, and my son right here is seventeen and O with boxing, they've been training their whole life to box, he loves boxing, they both love it. We travel all across the state, we traveled to Lauton County, and they told my son that he had to get into a ring with a transgender, and my son got into that ring, he said, "Daddy, that's a girl, you said don't hit girls," and he said it loud. And they tried to bash my son and call my son homophobic, because he looked at this little girl, whether she want to call herself a boy or not, and he said, "That's a girl." There ain't nothing wrong with my son, and I don't teach my kids to demoni- to discriminate against nobody, but I'm going to tell you one thing that my grandmother once told me, "Your belief don't change your biology." And what you try to force on other people needs to be stopped. I'm a parent, and I don't feel like it's right for nobody, whether you get elected or not, to take my right on how I want to raise my children away from me. I raised my children by the Bible, and I raised them by the Bible because I wasn't always a good person. I used to be a bad person, but my Lord and Savior saved my life, and then He used me to touch other people. So right now, y'all are under pressure, y'all being pressured to change y'all vote. Y'all being pressured, like Peter was pressured three times, and I'm going to let y'all know right now, that by the time six o'clock comes in the morning, if you deny my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and don't do what you know the Bible says do, the rooster gonna crow. This is not right, these people know it's not right, because we represent the city of Newport News, and they just flew people into this city right here that don't even live here from all over, just to come and tell y'all what to do for us. And they not even from here, this city is overwhelmingly against this. And I'm telling you right now, if y'all know who I am, I'm nobody but a humble servant, I swear. If this thing gets across this board and I got to hear it from my kids, y'all not going to hear the end of me. And ain't these people that just flew in here to talk. I'm right here in this community every single day, every election season, getting people together. Gary, I promise you, you will not be elected next time, I, I promise y'all he will not be elected. That's for that one vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Natalie Ashby?
Good evening, I attended, um, last week's school meeting as a citizen of Newport News, and I was heartened by the common sense approach to not only protect our children, but also to affirm the parental rights for our children. I raised four children, I have eight grandchildren, three are of middle school age and three are in elementary school. I have worked with youth and families for many, many years. I realize these are challenging times, but it is in the best interest of this community to reinforce the family unit. The schools are not parents, but I realize there are some parents who are quite happy to have the schools raise their children, but I also know that is a small percentage. It is a fallacy to believe that if we disagree with this policy, that we do not love all people, even those who are different from us. The bottom line is, this is not good policy, you already have sufficient policy. I do not care for the fact that we nearly had a closed-door session without our, our ability to speak up and without the board chairman who previously opposed the policy. Further, I am highly offended that a Virginia State delegate and a US congressman would try to strong our, our community into making a decision that clearly the majority of our citizens are not in favor of. I do not like coercion, manipulation, I do not like deception, as these things prove that representatives are not representing us. I believe the Virginia State Deleg- Delegates and the US Congress have other priorities they need to tend to without dictating what is best for our community. I pray for boldness and courage over you, that you will stand for what is right in supporting and, and affirming our families, thank you.
Russ Harper?
Good evening. Courageous, responsible, unflappable, tenacity, strong, brave, valiant, attentive, thoughtful, receptive and understanding the will of the parents. These are words that I used to describe the actions of the Newport News Public School Board last Tuesday when they voted not to accept the transgender policy being promoted from the Virginia Department of Education. But today, I'm not so confident in those words. Today, I hope that we are not here to change the powerful stance that you showed last week. I pray that you have not been pressured, blackmailed, or coerced in any way by any politicians or special interest groups wishing to serve their own agenda. I want to believe that last week's vote was a sincere vote. I want to believe that you voted because you saw the damage that this policy could do to parental rights, student safety, I wanna believe that you voted because you saw the damage that this policy could do to parental rights, student safety, and teachers' wellbeings. I wanna believe that you understood that this policy defies logic and is impossible to safely and confidently implement. But most of all, I wanna believe that you voted against it because you understand that it's not a fair, not a well-thought-out, and it's an unbiased policy, and its effect, if allowed, will be harmful and far-reaching to students, parents, and teachers. And I understand that there's been much pressure to meet again by people who disagree with your stance. But usually, from my experience, when that happens, it means that you're on the right track. For a great philosopher once said, beware when all men speak well of you. That philosopher was Jesus, by the way. Truth is, those groups and organizations that pressured you, they do not care about you, or your kids, or my kids, or anyone else's kids. They don't care about our families. They don't care about the parents. They only care about an agenda, and they will push that agenda at all costs. The truth is, these politicians don't care about our children, or you, me, or parents either. They only care about getting reelected, and they fear a vote against this transgender policy will damage their chances, and they can't afford that. But when all is said and done, and by chance you vote for this policy, those groups and organizations that are pressuring you won't be here when your children and our children are hurt, both emotionally and physically by this one-sided policy. Those politicians that are shaming you and pushing you and bullying you won't be around to help you when your daughter or my daughter fails to get a sports scholarship because a biological male beat her. A scholarship which, if she doesn't get, by the way, she won't be able to attend college. They won't be here when CPS is possibly called, because I want to affirm my child's gender choice. These politicians groups just want their agenda fulfilled, but we will be here. The parents of the children of Newport News Public School System, parents which elected you to represent us, the very parents that this policy alienates and tries to exclude, and that's why we're here tonight. So I ask you to do what you did last week. Have the courage to vote no once again, and let me leave you with this. When you stand for what's right, you often have to stand alone. Still, I ask that you stand. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I must inform the board that I've exceeded the thirty-minute extension that was provided. And so in order to continue public comment, it would require another extension of our, of our time. Is there a motion to extend public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, and is the, to clarify, Ms. Amon, is the motion to extend public comment by thirty minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. First by Ms. Amon, and seconded by Madam Vice Chair. And so, there being no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Four.
Doc, Mrs. Amon.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
So, we do have some room here now, so what I'm going to do is I'm gonna call, try to do another fifteen speakers, and call, call your names now, so you would listen carefully, please, and then make your way into the auditorium. So our speaker's gonna be Florence Ian Borr, Michael Battle, Tanisha Press, Joy Kemp, Halaia Holmes, Kishana Smallwood, Autumn Cuevas, Scott Furman, William Clark, Mary Horning, Mary Voss, Shania Gray Cheeseman, Shania Gray Cheeseman, Tanisha Williams, Guy and Robin Levy, and Wendy Stuck. So if you would make your way into the auditorium now, those folks who had your name called, and then we'll continue, we'll go ahead and continue, Ms. Florence Ian Borr, please.
Good evening, everyone. We do appreciate you guys for all the jobs that you guys have been doing. I'm a foreigner from another country, so this, the first place I landed was Newport News, and I have been blessed in Newport News. I am a proud mother of a young child who is going to high school. I stand against this policy. This is not my belief, and this is not what I want Newport News Public School to indoctrinate to my children. I want to know today as a mother, what would you tell me if anything happened to my child in the bathroom? Would you call me and tell me that my child got molested in the bathroom? What would you tell me as a mother? For those politicians who are getting involved in this, let me let you know, this is your last election. We're not gonna vote for you all anymore, because we're tired of this. We actually placed you all in your position to support us, struggling mothers, single mothers. This is another reason why I woke up in the morning and blessed my child to go to school. I blessed my child to go to school to learn and to sit also in the same position where you're sitting today. I refuse, as a mother and as a foreigner, to accept this. This is not my belief. I know how it feels. I'm also part of Newport News Public School. I know how it feels when you're being imposed to do things out of your will. Please stand in the fact of truth and refuse to let any politician tell you what to do. The life of our children generation is in your hands. I don't want to wake up in the morning and cry over my child. I refuse. I don't wanna cry over my child, somebody bullying my child in school. I don't have a problem with any child that choose to be a transgender. That's okay. I've seen a lot of them. We love them, because that's their choice. But please don't impose anything that is not what I have in code in my child for you to put it in my child. I refuse. I want my child to be taught. I want my child to be learned. I want my child to be educated. This is not the reason why we're here. Please stand on the truth. For those politicians that are getting involved, mark this. This is your last position. I am not in support of this. How do you want to explain to me, when my child go to school, I teach my child one thing, and Newport News Public School is teaching my child another thing? Thank you.
Michael Battle.
Good evening. I wanna start by first addressing trans and gender non-conforming students. You are loved. You are here by design. You hail from a legacy and lineage of resilient beauty and grace, and you are not alone. To families of trans folks, you are not alone. You have the opportunity to be a revolutionary warrior, to learn a deeper level of love, a love that helps you to overcome all of the fear. I wanna thank the board for reconsidering the new Virginia state law mandating protections for trans students, and I wanna especially thank Mr. Hunter for being the courageous one and being the sole person to vote in favor of this last week. I'm Michael David Battle, founder and executive director at Garden of Peace. We exist to center Black, trans, and queer youth, elevate and empower the narratives and lived experiences of Black youth and their caretakers, and guide revolutionary spaces of healing and truth through art, education, and mentorship. Our work began almost nine years ago, and over one-third of the folks who contacted us were from this area. We began in southwestern Pennsylvania, by the way. It was both shocking and alarming to see that over one-third of the folks reaching out to us were from Hampton Roads. We were a small organization with two people on staff. Folks contacted us with everything, from their child experiencing harassment and structural barriers in the school systems, to guidance counselors reaching out for housing support for students after being kicked out of their homes. On average, trans and gender non-conforming students are kicked out at age twelve. So as we're talking about the parents who are so concerned about their children, they are throwing their children away. Seventy-two percent are homeless and housing insecure and couch surfing. They're street homeless, and it is our job to protect them. In 2020, my family and I moved to Newport News to build safer spaces right here in our communities to be seen, heard, and loved. According to the National Transgender Discrimination Survey of 2016, the majority of respondents who were out or perceived as transgender while in school, K through twelve, experienced mistreatment, verbally harassed fifty-four percent, twenty-four percent were physically attacked, and thirteen percent were sexually assaulted because they were transgendered. Further, seventeen percent experienced such severe mistreatment that they left school as a result. On average, sixteen percent of us drop out by sixth grade. As educators, guides, and mentors, it is our role to provide care and protect our children. We are powerful. Each and every one of us comes to earth with a gift. As adults, we have the power to deeply affirm, shape, and hold these young people and help them to reveal their gifts. We also have the power to deeply destroy the fabric of who they are and who they have come to be.
Thank you, Mr. Battle.
Thank you.
Tanisha Press.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Tanisha Press. I'm also a mother of a first-grade student in Newport News Public Schools. I'm also a member of a faith-based organization. We're God-centered, where we, we're just committed to meeting God, where He's working, to help turn this nation back to Him once a day at a time. And so we do that through, I'm sorry, healing, peace, and justice strategies. And so it's God's desire to connect with every person, every individual. He wants us to be made whole. He wants us to be healthy. He wants us to have healthy relationships with each other, and in order to do that, we have to see Him clearly. We have to, we have to be able to see His ways and be able to walk in His ways. And as we do the express will of God in our communities and in our nation, we begin to eat the fruit of life. We begin to eat the fruit of truth and liberty. We enter into His shalom, and that's really just a state of peace, rest, and wholeness with one another. And that'll be for our children, for their generations after them, their children and their children. And so it's our, our responsibility to instill godly kingdom standards in our children. We have to teach them. This nation was founded on biblical values. It wasn't perfect. It isn't perfect. But we can't throw everything away. We can't destroy the foundation. We have to keep sight of the vision that God gave us and begin to build on that to perfect it. And so we have to employ God's standards for life, peace, health, wellness, and liberty, and to be able to see that, to be able to see that in our community. It starts with us. It starts with our education system. It starts with our children in our schools. We have to invest in good and godly things in our children in order to reap a pleasant and beneficial future for all. If we depart from God's principles, if we adopt policies such as this, that we know is against the known will of God, then all we are gonna do is continue to reap destruction and reap further confusion in our school, in our youth. We cannot continue down this path, but we have this, this great opportunity here today to, to turn back to God, to, to just return to His standards, to His way of living. If we say that we serve the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, then we cannot enact policies that are contrary to what His word says. We can be a nation, we can be the city where the good news comes forth, a city that, that will proclaim His goodness, proclaim His life and His truth. Thomas Jefferson once said, "Can the liberties of a nation be thought secure when we have removed from them their only firm basis, a conviction in the minds of the people that these liberties are the gift of God, that they are not to be violated but with His wrath? Indeed, I tremble for my country when I reflect that God is just and that His justice cannot sleep forever." So if we continue to remove God and His words, His instructions for right living, the, out of the foundation of our nation, I too tremble that the hedge of protection will be removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joy Kemp.
Hello. First, I wanna say that nobody has to go to the extent of falsely claiming to be trans to bully, harass, or prey on children. There are plenty of cisgender people preying on children in society and in the church. Without oversight or accountability, excluding trans children from the bathroom does not protect any children. No matter what change occurs in a society, there are always people who find change to be a scary, scandalous thing. It was in the lifetime of my parents and many of you in here when little Black children had to be escorted by National Guard into the previously segregated halls of school buildings sanctioned by many churches and Bible verses. Today, we look at the jeering faces of the adults in those Black and white photographs as bullies. What we don't see is the same tactics of alarm and fear are being used against non-binary and trans children today. It is the job of educators and authority figures to keep children safe. There's been a lot of fear mongering about keeping children safe while neglecting the trans and non-binary children that already go to Newport News Public Schools. In the Bible, Jesus condemns those who strain at gnats and yet swallow camels. In the Bible, we are told that speaking with the tongues of angels and men mean nothing if we do not have love. Yet, time and time again, I see people uphold a tenuous morality that costs the lives and mental healths of non-binary and trans people daily. People who speak of moral obligation to deny trans children the support that they deserve and require while swallowing the camel that is the suffering of non-binary and trans children who are often rejected from their families, tormented at schools, unsupported by administration, abandoned by society, and slaughtered by hate. This is the reason for the separation of church and state. School administration is charged with the welfare and safety of all of its children and its care, including the non-binary and trans children. This is the reason why we must adopt the state law mandating protections for trans, trans students, because it is a matter of accepting, supporting, and caring for children in the unique ways that they may need care. A pronoun costs you nothing, but it's suicide prevention for some children. A name change doesn't hurt you, but it's dropout prevention of some children. You see, we are not here to argue biblical morality, but how to best serve the children of this district, how to best see, say all of the children, including non-binary and trans children, thrive. It is time we truly put children first here in this school district, which is the job of a school district administration, not the catering to the whims and desires of adults to whom these matters are not life and death. Thank you.
Halaia Holmes.
Hello, my name is Halaia and I'm fourteen. I wanted to talk about my experiences and why I wanted this policy to be adopted. My experience is, you might be thinking, oh, they're just fourteen. They don't know a lot. I can say with the most confidence and respect that that is wrong. My family, especially my parents, work hard to help trans people feel more comfortable in the world they live in. Because of that, I'm around a lot of people who have come to my parents for help. Because of that, they can't, because they can't get certain healthcare or jobs. I'm around a lot of people who are scared, angry, sad, and many more emotions just because people don't accept them or because people don't, uh, don't respect them. I personally, I personally get how people will dislike a person because of the gender. I personally, wait, excuse me. I personally don't get how people will dislike a person because of the gender they identify as. I might be, it might be because I'm young, but I personally think that is not affecting you. Why go out of your way to hurt someone? I feel like most of the disrespect towards trans people come from adults. I have yet to talk to a child or a teenager who has a problem with trans people. It might be because of my, most of my generation, Gen Z, is accepting when it comes to the LGBTQ plus community. But I still don't get it. I have a question, though. How would you feel if you came out as trans and there are people who are being shaded disrespectful and just plain out rude? How would you feel if you walk around, there are people, there are just people making faces and giving your side, giving you side eyes just because you came out as trans? So you would feel more comfortable in your body? As the person who is gender, gender fluid and identifies as trans, I think it would be great for schools to accept that trans people should be able to say and do, I'm a guy, I use the men's bathroom, I play boys' basketball. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a girl, I use the women's bathroom. I play women's soccer. I use she/her pronouns, just like other girls and boys. I would like for my friends to not come to me crying or sad because they get, they're getting disrespected because they're trans. I would like, I would like my friends to smile and not cry every other day because they're getting disrespected. I have a lot of trans friends who don't feel comfortable because of how they're getting treated. They come out as trans, because they came out as trans. This is why I would like for schools to adopt this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Kishana Smallwood.
I'm here because I believe I'm in a very unique position. I am an elementary school teacher. I've been teaching with Newport News Public Schools for, this is the start of my seventeenth year. My children have attended Newport News Public Schools from kindergarten all the way up, I have college, high school, middle, through their whole lives, and I have a trans child. All of my kids have been successful in school. All of my kids have been surrounded by supportive, helpful, caring adults at these schools. For this reason, I was, as a mom, that mom that was here earlier, I felt what she felt. I know exactly where she was. I was mortified by some of the things that I heard about my child. And then I kept saying to myself, well, if they were there when my child came out, they'd understand. There's no way that people would say these things if they understood. And so I wish that I could come and tell you that story. And so I wish that I could come and tell you that story, and I came here today to tell you that. Um, but then something kept stopping me from writing it down. And then I realized it's because my child's coming out story isn't for school. It's not for someone at school to give to us. That was something that was personal. That was my child's choice, my child's timing. Um, that was a pers, that was personal, and that was for our family. This board is supposed to be a reflection of us, Newport News Public Schools. My children have had tolerant, supportive teachers that I don't feel would have any kind of issue with this policy. And I believe that as a reflection of us, the vote should match with how we would feel, the teachers of Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you. Autumn Cuevas?
Hello. I am the pride sponsor for Heritage High School. I'm also a proud world history teacher at Heritage High School. Um, I'm also a, a citizen and a lifelong resident of Newport News. I have to say, this has been an eye-opener of a night for me. When we make the decision to work in education, we make the decision to work with and for the well-being of all students, all parents, all colleagues. We're told to leave it at the door, you know, whether we're having a bad day, if we're having whatever, you know, whatever we have going on, we leave it at the door for the good of our students. To that end, I suppose it's a good thing that we have a separation of church and state in the Constitution that everyone's been referencing tonight. I've heard a lot of folks making statements tonight about the will of God, but what about parents, students, educators, staff who aren't Christian? We represent and we take care of all of the students, all of the parents, all of our colleagues, all of the teachers. When we do, or when do we take them into account? If you make a vote on this from a place of religion, are you not establishing a certain religion above others in the community? Or establishing it above the lack thereof, in the case of some of the speakers? Some of the speakers tonight have said that they're arguing against this bill for the teachers. I want you to know, you don't speak for me, and please don't think that you do. Matter of fact, you don't speak for most of the teachers that I know. To those who claim that we don't care about anything but an agenda, first off, how dare you claim to know what, what teachers are thinking in general if you haven't been in a classroom? But, and especially to know what's going on in my head. Tell me, have you ever had to sit with a child who is afraid to go home because of who they are? Have you ever had to set up a meeting with an administrator because some of your students, the ones that you've developed rapport with, the ones that trust you, that you have put time and effort into building that relationship with, that essential relationship that we talk about? Because there we're having food thrown at them in the cafeteria? Have you ever sat, sat up worrying about a student over winter break because she was on the edge of a mental breakdown, pretending to be something she wasn't? This isn't about bathrooms, and everyone's getting that convoluted. It's not about bathrooms. It is about, and it's, it's not about parental rights. It's about student rights. When did we forget that students are people too? When did we relegate them to props? And what about the children quotes? We say that we want them to be college, career, and citizen-ready, but then when they speak up or when we have a chance to allow them to express themselves and to properly venture out into the world saying, "Here I am. This is who I am. This is who I want to be. This is what I want to study in college. This is what I want to do." Then we shut them down and we say, "Oh, not the, not like that. Not, not, not like that." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cuevas. Scott Furman?
First off, thank you for your time. I definitely don't envy your position tonight. I'm only here because I was disappointed that we're backing up because of bullying from bigger politicians. I teach my kid against bullying. I feel like we should set an example as a board. Y'all have already made a vote. To me, a pretty strong vote was what, six to one? Stick to your guns. Stick to your words. As a dad of a seven-year-old little girl, I, I can't imagine a little boy going to the bathroom with her, nor can I imagine if she does want to be gay, which my brother is gay, so it's not against, that I'm against gay people or against lesbians. That's irrelevant, but that's my place as a parent to talk to my child, not yours, not the teacher's, not this young lady I was just talking. If my child was to go to her and her class and feel uncomfortable, then maybe she could call me, but it's not her right to parent my child. I send my child to school to get an education, not be parented. She's parented by her, by me and her mother. A little nervous. Um, I've seen a lot of things that have already been said, but I'm not here to bash y'all, at least yet, if we stick to the course. But I can assure you, if this reverses back, I'm going to do everything I possibly can to make sure that none of you are reelected because you're getting bullied. That's not what I want for my children, and I don't think that's what we should show them as leadership, especially from our school board. Thank you.
William Clark?
Good evening, everybody. Oh, I'm like him. I don't envy you guys at all right now. I mean, it's, it's pretty bad, you know? We were, was it six to one? We had, um, I just wrote that, you know, as we stand here tonight, our country was built on beliefs and freedom. We say the pledge at our schools, courthouse, any federal or public gatherings. In the pledge, it says, "One nation under God." God made each, made each of us unique in a way that we are born, we are male or female. God made all of us to fit His agenda, not man's or political stance. When you go into a hospital or wherever you may go to birth a child, determine, that determines at that time that he is male or female. These behaviors of kids don't just come onto them. It is taught to them in so many other ways, and schools should be focused on teaching the young minds reading, writing, and arithmetic. Our kids have been through so much this past year, and they don't need to feel uncomfortable when they go into the classroom, bathrooms, or anywhere else inside the schools. It is the school's responsibility to make sure that our kids are safe in the environment, and having boys and girls in the same locker room bathroom is not safe. We don't need our children to be exposed to things they may not be ready for. Majority should rule in this matter, and Newport News should follow the direction of the other local schools and say no to this ridiculous policy. Schools have been here for many years, and there has never been a crisis on children's identity. This agenda should not be focused on kids, teachers, or the parents. We are already walking on eggshells about the way we talk to people, and this will make things way worse than it already is. I hope Newport News will stand tall and say no to transgender policy. Thank you.
Mary Horning?
Good evening. My name is Mary Horning, and I'm a middle school teacher here in Newport News Public Schools. As I begin, I'd like to give a shout out to our trans and non-binary students. We see you, we hear you, and we love you. I was taken aback by some of the comments made by some members of the community and indeed some members of this board at last meet, at last week's meeting. Admittedly, the distinctions between gender identity, assigned sex at birth, and sexual orientation are complex. But a lack of understanding of these complexities does not afford this board the right to abrogate statutory or state law, nor does it afford this board the right to substitute their own religious beliefs for public policy. We have trans students in Newport News Public Schools, and we have non-binary students in Newport News Public Schools. I know because I've taught several of them. And here's the thing, it's just not a big deal. Students don't kick up a fuss about each other's pronouns, and I am unaware of bathrooms ever having been an issue where, by the way, indeed, students enter the student bathrooms, use the loo, wash their hands, and return to class. Our trans and non-binary students exist. They are real. Their identities are not a phase or a fad. Trans and non-binary students are among the most vulnerable young people in our society. They are at higher risk of homelessness, victimization, depression, and suicidality than their cisgender peers. And so the last thing that we should be doing is propagating a policy of epistemic violence that in turn facilitates and normalizes physical violence. Acknowledging the fundamental humanity and dignity of our trans and non-binary students is not a violation of anybody's right to believe or to worship as they wish. And nor does, or should, anybody religion, anybody's religion justify morally bankrupt and legally indefensible public policy. The law is clear, and we should be too. We must protect trans kids. Thank you.
Ms. Mary Voss?
Hello. Uh, Mary Voss, an NPS teacher and parent, and a proud member of V-COR, which is the Virginia Caucus of Rank and File Educators, a caucus of the VEA. Before delving into tonight's, uh, topic, I want to very briefly share concerns that fellow teachers and staff have, have asked me to share about the plan for large class sizes and three students to a bus seat during COVID. We've already seen districts across the country have to close because of COVID outbreaks as the Delta variant overfills local pediatric hospitals. Many parents are interested in a more flexible, more easily accessible virtual learning program, which would also help reduce overcrowding in classrooms and buses where COVID is inevitably, inevitably going to run rampant. Also, many classroom teachers won't have an unencumbered lunch break this school year because they'll have to monitor their students in the classroom during lunch, which will make it very difficult for those educators to get a much-needed mental break during the day or even bathroom breaks during the day without having to ask other staff members to cover their class. Working with children and youth all day long without a, a real break and without convenient access to a bathroom is a recipe for teacher burnout. Some principals are making unencumbered lunch work for their staff by having other staff members rotate to give every teacher a real lunch break every day. Please, uh, consider making that district-wide so that we don't burn out our classroom teachers so badly that they consider quitting amidst an already sizable classroom teacher shortage. Onto tonight's topic, please pass the state-mandated protections for trans students and also implement all of the VDOE's model policies for working with trans students. I'd also like to point out that when trans and non-binary kids use the bathroom, it is just to use the bathroom. A two thousand eighteen study by the Williams Institute found no increase in crime in bathrooms in areas with trans-inclusive policies. However, research does show that trans teens are at great risk when they are denied access to a bathroom or locker room that matches their gender identity, with nearly one out of three of those trans teens reporting being sexually assaulted in the last twelve months when they didn't have access to a bathroom that matches their gender identity. So let's stop buying into these bizarre, bad faith arguments that scapegoat trans kids when in actuality, trans kids are far more likely to be the victims of bullying, violence, and sexual assault than being the perpetrators. The Trevor Project's twenty twenty national survey on LGBTQ youth mental health found that trans and non-binary youth who reported having their pronouns respected by all or most of the people in their lives attempted suicide at half the rate of those who did not have their pronouns respected. This is literally a life and death issue for trans kids. The VDOE's model policies for trans students point out that privacy and conscient, unconfidentiality are critical for transgender and non-binary students who do not have supportive families. Disclosing, does that mean over?
Thank you, Ms. Voss.
Okay, thank you. Please pass the, please support the VDOE's policies. Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, I am coming close to the end of my, uh, of the allotted thirty-minute time extension, and I will inform the board that we have, uh, we have thirteen additional cards. Uh, so if the board is willing to provide an additional thirty minutes, we may be able to complete all of the cards that have been passed forward. Is there a motion to extend time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we extend the additional thirty minutes.
Thank you. There's a first. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Second by Ms. Ammon. Any question? All right, there being none. Madam Quick, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely? Mr. Ely? Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to call, uh, the names of the speakers that, um, are remaining. So essentially, if you filled out a card, it's now time to come on into the auditorium because we do have room for you. Uh, our first speaker is going to be Shania Cheeseman, Tanisha Williams, Guy and Robin Levy, Wendy Stuck, E Sue Fitzgerald, Sebastian Moore, Fred Levy, Craig Holly, William Leroy, Deborah Mitchell, and Sandra Tumanyel, if I pronounced that correctly, Rose Cam, and Robin Field. So, uh, hopefully you heard your name, and please make your way to the auditorium at this time, and we're going to go ahead and continue our comments with, uh, Ms. Shania Cheeseman.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys allowing us to come here and speak again. This is our second time. I just want to thank you all for all that you do, so thank you. I am a citizen of Newport News, been a citizen of Newport News for years. My daughter has attended Menchfield, my nieces, my nephews, and they are, uh, very successful because of you all. They already have, already, um, graduated. They have their bachelor's degrees, and they already have, uh, attended military. My daughter did twenty-two years, retired military as we speak, so thank you for all you have done for my family. I am speaking to let you guys know that you all have done a great job. The policies, the procedures, regulations that you have in place, that you have been in place for years, have been impeccable. You have been doing a great job because what you have done, your policy and procedures, it parallels. It mirrors. It matches. It goes with the independence, Declaration of Independence. It goes by the amendments, and it goes by our rights, all of our rights. Every one of us, doesn't matter if it's for personal reasons, private reasons, biblical beliefs and religious beliefs and biblical, uh, values. It goes all across the board, and we thank you. We ask you to continue to please with your regulations, rules, policy, and procedures that are working, that are impeccable, and that will continue to be impeccable and, um, will also impose the lives of all our children, all across the board, the protection of all children your policies and procedures have done and will continue. And we thank you if you will continue to keep it in place as you already voted for, and we thank you for all that you do. This is not easy for y'all to sit here and listen to this over and over again, and for you guys to come out here again and to listen to us one more time, we sure thank you. So we just ask you to please continue with your, uh, policy and procedures that you do have in place, and we thank you for all that you do, and God bless you, because all that you have placed, it parallels. It matches. It mirrors the Declaration of Independence, Amendment rights, all of that. I could just keep going on and on, okay? And it also comes under one God, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. This is for all of us, for all our children's protection for them all. So thank you, and we ask that you continue with that. So thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you. Um, Tanisha Williams? Tanisha Williams? We'll hold that, we'll hold that card. Then we're going to go to Guy and Robin Levy.
Thank you for, to the Newport News School Board for your willingness to meet this evening and reconsider the issue of approving a transgender policy for our students. The fact that we are here this evening speaks volumes about the amazing elected and professional leadership we have come to know for our Newport News City Public Schools. It represents the fact that our uniquely fabulous educators are able to guide ninety-three point nine percent of our students in two thousand twenty to graduate in four years. When Robin and I were public students on the peninsula in the sixties and seventies, our society was not the informed, tolerant society we strive for today. If you were a member of any non-majority group, there is a good chance you face personal challenges in school that we just all accepted as reality. But the reality is, we are a better and more productive community when every member of our community has the freedom to exist and hopefully thrive just the way they are. Why do we even need a transgender policy when we are already recognized as? Why do we even need a transgender policy when we are already recognized as one of the most tolerant and inclusive school systems in Virginia? Why can't we just be good educators and move on? Aside from the likely draining of our valuable resources to oppose a transgender policy, we should have a policy so our educators can assure safe and supportive schools for our students. We should have a policy so everyone in our Newport News Public School community can understand the challenges of a transgender student. We should have a policy so all of our students can learn about how to be kind and respectful to their teachers and their peers. We should have a policy so the freedoms and opportunities we are entitled to enjoy in this country are extended to every student, including our transgender students. We should have policy so our transgender students graduate on time and make our world a better place because we help them and every student to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. It brought to my attention that there may be a few cards that were filled out, but we don't have them here, so I'm going to call those names that I have. Mr. Tom Ammon is going to be my first.
Good evening. It's been a long night. I think everybody's heard a lot of interesting points and counterpoints. I just want to kind of remind us where we've been and where we're going. 10 days ago, we were here making a decision on the transgender policy. We had 30 or so members of the community speak on the issue. We then heard, we then all heard the administration describe the policy, and after that, the board had a chance to speak on the policy. Following that, a vote was taken with a five-to-one result with one of standing, and the policy was voted down. The issues that concerned most of you were the same issues that concerned the members of the community as well. Now we are back again to vote on a policy again that has already been voted down. We are not here because of a huge crowd, ground swell from families supporting the policy, but rather because of undue influence from a handful of people and special interest groups, and that's really sad. I have read the proposed changes to the policy, and none of them address the issues cited last week by many of the board members. Number one, it still allows the school system to keep secrets from parents with regard to how their children would be addressed regarding their gender at school. Number two, it still allows or even encourages a child to explore transgender lifestyle even if the family did not believe in this lifestyle. Number three, it can also possibly have parents labeled as abusive and have CPS get involved in a family matter over a simple situation that should be handled in the family, not the school system. Number four, it also has not addressed the major distraction for teachers as they try to teach and at the same time worry about the proper pronoun to use for a child. The straw man, that if we don't approve this policy, the transgender child is not protected from discrimination is categorically false. Newport News Public Schools already has a no discrimination policy in place, and from all accounts, this policy is working very, very well. Please remember, parents, not the government or the school system, are in charge of their children. Please respect that parents should know if their child is having gender issues, and children should not be being taught gender-expanding concepts in the schools. Please don't allow for political pressure from powerful people or special interest groups to change your mind. Stand strong with your vote. You did it right the first time. Stand strong. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Ammon. I'm going to call Susan Young Bluth next, I believe, as she filled out a card earlier. Susan Young Bluth in the audience? While we wait for Ms. Young Bluth, then we will call Wendy Stuck.
Good evening. I am Wendy Stuck, and I was the 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year for my school. Thank you for extending time for everyone to speak. I am disappointed that you voted against accepting the Virginia Department of Education's model policies for the treatment of transgender students in public elementary and secondary schools. Quote, "The 2020 legislation requires local school boards to adopt policies that are consistent with but maybe more comprehensive than the model policies adopted by the VDOE by the start of the 2021-2022 school year," said VDOE spokesman Charles Pyle on June 24th. Our school system told Newport News Public Schools stakeholders that we were not going to follow a legislative mandate. Legislation required us to have an inclusive policy for transgender students, and we refused. NNP's policy JB does not specifically protect transgender students' rights. Stakeholders may now choose to disregard school system policies and procedures that they disagree with. We learn students' names, we can learn pronouns, we learn their nicknames, transgender students do not change randomly, it is not confusing, I had four last year. Multiple school board members cited Christian values as a reason to vote against the policy. Does that mean that Newport News Public Schools rejects non-Christians? LGBTQIA is not an agenda, it is simply an identity. If NNP's rejects one identity as a public school system, then we reject all identities. These students wish to pursue an education safely. As for small children, Newport News Public Schools shut the door in their faces. They ask questions all the time, what happened to just listening? We do contact parents, guardians, and legal caregivers when we are concerned a child will hurt themselves or others. We don't contact those adults if they are the ones who may cause harm. This, the VDOE policy does not go against IHAMB because providing inclusion does not instruct sexuality. I read through the policy, and I do not see anything about hiding information from parents. I do not read it as assuming parents are abusive. We are a public school system, therefore we have to open our doors to all people, whether or not we like or dislike them or anything. By rejecting the VDOE's orders to forge a model policy for our school system, Newport News Public Schools allows our stakeholders to reject students and teachers that they dislike. NNP's rejected the Commonwealth's legislation to project trans people. This is not about forcing anyone to go against faith, religion, or moral code. It is about inclusion and the safety of all of our stakeholders. Yes, sir. While many of us agree or disagree, I'm so pleased that we're not cursing or yelling at each other. I love my Newport News Public Schools school board, coworkers, neighbors, whether we agree or disagree. Have a peaceful night, everybody. Good night.
It was an accidental buzz.
Thank you, Ms. Voss.
I watched it, I understood, not a problem. Have a great night. Sorry about that. It's okay. Have a peaceful night, everybody. Safe travels, everybody.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Good evening. I'm now going to rehash what you've heard 500 times tonight. As I understand the decision that you made last week, you decided to take the year that the state has allocated you to design a plan that works for Newport News. I have two children who went through this school system. I am blessed to be a military brat, so we were in and out of here. I have five grandchildren in this school system. I volunteered in this school system for over a decade. Transgender kids are not new. They, anybody who was around when Woodside High School opened saw a whole lot of new stuff. It's not new. The school system has been handling it for years. It wasn't, it's a non-issue that has become an issue. It is an issue when you take, when you say, "This group of children has more of a right than this." It is a, yes, it is a Christian, I'm a Christian, believe in right and wrong, but I got a new slash for you. We're not the only religion in town who is not going to be happy with you, because I assure you, the Muslim community will not be happy with you either. Point is, you made a decision, and I think an educated, intelligent decision to step back, look at your school system, and figure out what works for us, what works for your teachers. These guidelines set by the state punishes teachers for communicating with parents. The state does not have guardianship of my grandchildren, my children, or anybody else's children unless they are in the system. The city does not. You are an elected body, and you're an elected body so that you can act separately from city council and other politicians. Please continue to do your job, because I was really proud of you all. Thank you very much. And Dr. Parker, every teacher I know, and I do know an awful lot of teachers, say, "You listened pretty well to them, and did you sit back and you think?" And I appreciate that as a parent and as a grandparent. Thank you all very much. Please stand your ground. You drew a line, then stand, stand tall.
Susan Young Bluth? She in the audience?
I ask again that you not vote yes on either the proposed transgender policy nor the procedure. The policy and the model procedures issued by the Virginia DOE was conceived without any thought or guidance as to how it will be implemented by the school boards. Proof of that and a major concern with the policy and procedures, the fact that the procedure on page 1A states that the DOE shall develop and make available policies in accordance with evidence-based best practice. Evidence-based best practice is exactly that, based on scientific evidence documented over time with a definite correlation between practice and outcomes. Not only did the DOE not give you guidance to a procedure you were about to develop, they have no evidence-based practice, nor do they require it. Just go to page four under Student Identification, the first step towards social transitioning. The procedure states, "Students will, schools will allow students to assert a name and gender pronoun that reflects their gender identity without any substantiating evidence nor any required minimum duration of expressed gender identity." Now, I'm not a lawyer, but I am a master's prepared nurse with 44 years' experience. I'll tell you, this would never occur in the sequence in medical professions. Social transitioning is not the first step in the journey of transgender individuals. Best practice begins with professional counseling from seasoned practitioners specifically schooled in these issues, followed by medical and psychiatric diagnoses of gender dysphoria, involvement of a child's parents and the social community outside their school, and then the social transitioning continues and beyond. 80 to 95% of children who state their identity with another sex pre-puberty will rejoin and choose their birth sex, and the dysphoria subsides away. Not all children who state they want to be the opposite sex in their formative years will transition. It is a very small percentage. Most of the severe mental problems we've been hearing all night occur at the point of facing elective transitioning surgery, to which they know there is no return. So with no exam, no medical testing against proven parameters, no psychiatric intervention, no parental notification or consent, which is not best practice for any pediatrician, and no parameters set to measure the outcomes of this untried procedure, you as a school board are willing to okay a teacher to take on this decision in their own hands. I submit, it's ludicrous, but it is exactly the experiment you are about to embark on. One in 30,000 males and one in 100,000 females assigned at birth have a medical diagnosis of gender dysphoria. Are we to believe that the Newport News schools have such a high rate compared to the national statistics that we have to go to these lengths? I'm appalled that three politicians who do not elect you and have no business interfering in your decisions, I have not changed my convictions, I wonder why you haven't. Thank you.
All right. We're next going to call Ms. Peterson Rose.
Hello, thank you. I'm Elizabeth Peterson Rose, and I live in Hilton Village. I'm disgusted by the board's previous vote. So not only do I want the board to follow the law, but I'm asking that you adopt the VDOE's model policies for the treatment of trans students. Using somebody's pronouns and their name has a hugely positive impact on the individual and harms nobody. If you are worried about being unsure about pronouns, nobody will fault you for deferring to they/them. My partner and I have lived here since 2017, but he's in the military, so we've only recently established residency this year. As I said, I live in Hilton Village, which is in the Central District. So I'm looking at both of you, Ms. Searls Law and you, Ms. Ammon. I want you guys to both know that there is a group of over 300 of your constituents that have been organizing for the last year to advocate for social justice in our community. Ms. Searls Law, the consensus among the group that I've seen so far seems to be that people have been surprised and were taken aback by your bigoted vote. I would like an apology from you, and I would like for you to do the right thing going forward. Ms. Ammon, I looked up your reelection results the other day. You're sitting in that seat with 30% of the vote. So just for emphasis, that means 70% of the voters did not want you there. Our group will be adding the vote you took the other day to the growing list of reasons that we are planning to organize against you. All it takes is for us to not split our vote four ways, which I'm sure we can do, hopefully we've learned. Obviously, I want you to do the right thing going forward. And then Mr. Gary Hunter, thank you. I am surprised to be thanking somebody for voting to not discriminate against children. That said, here we are. I'm grateful that you are on the board. I'm grateful that morality and evidence-based practices have a voice here. And I also, I want to apologize for my representatives. I assure you that in 2022 and 2024, we will be working to make sure that you are not alone. Thank you for your time.
Next card I have is Sebastian Moore.
How y'all doing tonight? Thank you for letting me speak. First of all, I want to say it's clear that there's no separation of church and state here. To a lot of you up here, I used to want to be like y'all. I'm from Newport News, born and raised. I'm a veteran, I'm married, I have kids in the school system, and I'm also an educator within the school system. I want you to reconsider your vote and vote yes, mainly because right here in the school board, it's education, and the number one thing that I see here is a lack of education. A lot of these people are speaking, and they speak uneducated about what it is to be trans and what transgender kids are and who they are about, well, what they are about. And I understand the fear that all these parents have, but I want to let all the parents know that not one of these transgender kids are going to walk into a bathroom and hurt someone's kid. The biggest thing that you need to understand is that these kids, they have a fear themselves of being hurt, which is the most harmful thing that we're sitting here discussing, a policy, when everyone thinks it's against their kids. So I would like for you to all take the time to reconsider and read my email, and there's a lot of people who have emailed you all. Take the time and learn what it is to be transgender. It's okay that you don't accept it, because you don't have to accept everybody, but as educators, it's okay, and you have to learn what it is, because there's students in our school system who are trans, and they go to the bathroom every day. And it's hard for them to go to the bathroom, but right now, they're sucking it up, and they're going to the bathroom. And there's plenty of people that I've seen walk in the bathroom all day, well, all night here, and little do they know, they've been in the bathroom with transgender people. So I'm sorry to tell you that all y'all, you know a lot of transgender people here. So it's time to make a change, and it's time to vote yes. Thank you.
Fred Levy?
Thank you so much for taking this time to reconsider your vote from last week, and this is something that I always hope for in our elected officials, which is open-mindedness and willingness to consider differences. I am also very appreciative of the tone of tonight's discussion. Unlike some places in Virginia, some places around the country, which is a tone of respect and civility, there have been passionate and strong agreements and disagreements, but there has been no uproar, no outbreak of crosstalk, and I very much appreciate, this is like for everybody who has participated, has cooperated in making sure this atmosphere has prevailed. I also want to say, as I preamble to getting into the core thing that I want to talk about this evening, which is, I am a proud parent, my wife and I have lived here since 1984. We put two kids through the Newport News school system. The kids got as great an education as I could hope for. My son went to Amherst and... as I could hope for. My son went to Amherst and Harvard Divinity, and then University of Illinois Doctorate Program in History. My daughter went to Gofer College and is currently a pastor in a Presbyterian church in Tulsa, Oklahoma. I might add that we are a two-religion family. I'm a Reconstructionist Jew, and my wife is Presbyterian. And yes, it is absolutely possible, even beneficial, to have a family where differences are celebrated. The, we've heard a lot of things tonight, people making claims, which I think have been very frightening, but I found most of these to be speculative. And that's a concern for me, because there's enough statistics and data and human stories to talk about that are more reflective of what's happening, as opposed to fear of what could be. And I think that's the biggest thing that I think is important to really focus on, about what's happening with real people and real lives. There's been a lot of talks. Some people are very religious. Some people are devout Christians. Some people are pastors who've spoken up. I want to speak to another piece of this. Now, understanding, of course, this is not a theocracy that we live in. We have a constitution. We have laws. We have civil laws, which really govern the law of the town and the law of the land. But when we think about some of our scriptures, I'm very impressed by Abraham, who we know from Genesis, right? Was, oh, am I done already?
Your time has expired. You want to wrap up that thought, Mr. Levy?
Oh, absolutely. It's, we were enjoined thirty-six times in the Torah to be kind to this stranger, for we won strangers in the land of Egypt. And I think that's something we just need to be mindful of, that minorities are important. It doesn't matter their numbers. Everybody needs to be treated with decency. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Craig Hawley.
Hi, good evening, and thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for what you're doing on behalf of Newport News Public Schools. Your time is very much appreciated. First, the representative from Family Foundations asked that I finish her statement because time had expired on her. That is this. During a lawsuit challenging the deficiencies of the model policies, a Virginia Department of Education attorney clarified that not only would there be no penalties for not adopting the policies, but funding will not be withheld from local school divisions. She wanted to encourage you with that. Speaking on my and my five children's behalf, ages six, four, two, and newborn, I just want to address one point of the model policies. The encouragement of this policy that teachers and administrators would refer a student by his or her gender preference at school and not disclose this fact to a parent or guardian to protect the student. Notice that nobody flinched when I said that I speak on behalf of my children. Why? Because they are minors, and parents speak on their behalf all of the time. I sign consents for doctor's appointments, bank accounts, even sometimes when they're playing. It is very well established that I sign these consents for things of far lesser importance than one's identity. Yet the model policy encourages schools to hide just that from me. If there is a problem within a home that leaves a school to believe that disclosing a child's preferred identity creates an unsafe environment, does one really believe that deceptive letters or sneaking around and hiding this fact will make situations better? Of course it will not. So I end with this. That child may one day walk across the stage, maybe get married, or perhaps raise a family of their own, and it will be the parent who is standing with them, not a school, not a teacher, no one here, probably even on this board. I ask that we protect that. There are other ways to create safe environments, but no long-term good has ever come from lying or deceiving. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley. At this time, we are nearing the end of the thirty-minute extension that was provided by the board, and I want to inform the board, we did have some additional cards that were passed forward in this last speaking period. So we do now have ten cards remaining to go through, and I do estimate that we likely could finish that in a thirty-minute extension. Is there a motion to allow for a thirty-minute extension? So move. All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hunter, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask for a five-minute recess.
Yes, I was about to provide that, yes. So Madam Clerk, would first please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searle's Law?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. So at this time, to accommodate a bio break, the board is going to go into recess for five minutes, and then we'll resume our public comments at eight fifty, eighty fifty-two.
I try to think of how scary it is for a kid. Who knows if their parents don't accept trans people, who may rail against them. And I try to think about what it is for that kid to go home and hide who they are. I think their gut crunches up like mine does in front of you all. I went to Newport News all through grade, middle, and high school. My children are in Newport News, and I think I know myself pretty well. I'm the only one that's been with me my whole life. And I don't think at any point there's anything my children could do that would make me reject them, not if my daughter told me to stop calling her by her name and call him by his name. But I don't know my future. And I know that if someday my daughter is afraid to tell me something because she thinks it will put her in danger, then I don't think it's anyone else's job to come and tell me that. I am willing to let Newport News Public Schools lie to me, to hide from me who my daughter is if my daughter believes that I'm a danger to her. It breaks my heart to think that one day she might be that way, that she might feel that way. It breaks my heart to think that maybe one day I might be that way. But I don't know the future. I have changed a lot. I don't think any of you taught me, which is probably why none of you are making angry eyes at me. But I have changed a significant amount. I sent you all an email apologizing for not being here, and as many people have pointed out, they were here last time, and you took a vote. And in my email, I began by apologizing for not paying attention, because it did not affect me, so far as I know. It will not affect me, so far as I know. But I have had, as a Newport News substitute teacher, to make three separate reports regarding violence that a student has spoken about in their home, because they have said something offhand to their friends.
Yes, your time has expired, Mr. Lawrence. You want to finish that thought?
Yes. And it would kill me to think that I could have to make that report again, and that they would go home one day and their parent, who's been baiting on them, now knows that they don't identify as the son or daughter they were, and they may be thrown out of their own home.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Next speaker is Jean McGruder.
I'm going to have to try this with one ear and aid. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent Chandler. Thank you for keeping me up past my bedtime. Y'all believed that, so. Okay, growing up in high school, I was humiliated. Tease, some of y'all might know some of this. It made fun of, because I unfortunately had lost my hearing in my younger days due to a bout with mumps. It destroys your hearing. So I know what it's like to be a person who is different from others. I felt the pain of the inability to do anything about it, and just had to accept it and move on. This whole room, all the speakers, know of students that have been put in my position at school. I will simply say, it's not the transgender student that will do anything to your children. It will be your children harming and teasing the transgender child. That's how it is in high school. That's how it is every school we've went to. This has always been how it is, and it will continue. Those that aren't a majority always have to uphill climb. They will always be in danger at school from those who don't think they belong. This is a policy question in it. It's not a procedure question. The procedures can be ironed out at a later date. This can end tonight with one vote. Any other vote besides the vote to follow the policy will mean many more hours spent on this, not only for the school board, but also for defending their choice to the courts, which make no doubt will follow. I ask school board to vote and adopt the state policy, and thank you, and y'all have a great evening.
Thank you for having me.
Next speaker is Ms. Holly Kidd.
Good evening, school board members, and thank you for staying so late and allowing us to speak. Appreciate you here in the public and hearing us. Couple things I want to mention. I do appreciate the fact that many of you are voting from a point of being Christians, and I appreciate that. We are a public school, and we have students who are not Christians. We have students who are other religions. And I think that Christianity and that type of voting and putting those values onto others belongs in a private Christian school. I also am disturbed and bothered that there's an implication that transgender students are not children of God. And I think they are. I think those children are students of God, and they deserve your protection. And I can only imagine that it's hurtful to them to hear implications that they are not children of God because they're transgender. I've taught many, many years, probably over two thousand students in the Newport News schools. I'm also a citizen of Newport News, and I have two stories I want to share with you that struck with me with this, with this law. I taught high school, so I taught older students, not elementary age. And one student I was having trouble with in the classroom, he was not turning in work. His grades were failing. I was concerned. I called home to talk to his parent, his mother, which he was a single mother, about what could be done to help him and help him improve with his schoolwork and his grades. He didn't come back to school for two or three days, and when he came back, he had a black eye and a broken arm. So the guidance counselors immediately handled the situation. I was told that I could no longer call home and speak to his parents because they were abusive. And this school and this school division has fabulous school counselors. Please let them do their job. They're not lying. They didn't lie to his parents. They handled the situation. They kept him safe. They saved that child. They saved that child. They're great school counselors, and they know how to handle these situations. The second story I have is another student. I was in the library tutoring, and I looked over and I saw one of my students there that I had taught before. I said, "What are you doing here?" I was so happy to see him. I went over and talked to him. I looked down. He had a suitcase. I said, "What are you doing with your suitcase here in the library?" He said, "Miss Kidd, my church has kicked me out. My parents have kicked me out. I'm living on the street." I said, "What's going on?" He said, "I told them that I was gay." And he had nowhere to turn. I offered to help him. He said, "Don't." He said, "I have found a place to stay. I've found a place that's safe from everybody in the alley." He was sleeping outside in the alley at forty degrees.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
So I ask that you please consider the protection of the students and get to know a transgender student because they're great kids.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
They are children of God. Thank you.
Christina Seles.
Gosh, I hope I don't get nervous. Good afternoon. I'm a teacher here at Newport News. I'm also a mother to three amazing children, a senior and a sophomore at Warwick, and a seventh grader at Booker T. And I think my main thing that after... I mean, I've been here as long as you have, listening to everything. I'm tired too, but it's a main... What I... My main thing is that we... It's not about us. It's not about the adults. This isn't about what we want. It's about how do we make our students, the children, how do we make sure that we protect them, that we guide them, that we allow them to thrive? I asked my kids because I needed to hear from them. I needed to hear how do they feel about this situation? And I asked my son, "No, if a trans..." A trans... I get confused, sorry, because I'm probably from, you know, a different generation where all these words are confusing. If a trans boy goes into the bathroom, how would you feel? He's like, "I do my business. He does his. Nothing." And I go, "Well, what if you see one of these kids getting bullied or mistreated in the bathroom?" He says, "I'd... You know, I'd speak up for him. I'd beat the kids up. I'm going to be a senior." I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, no, don't beat anybody up." But he would stand up for that child. I asked my daughter right there. I said, "What do you think?" And she's like, "They're people. What do you mean, what do I think?" To them, what we ask them is crazy. They're like, "Why can't you adults accept who we are? This generation is amazing." Like, I'm ready to pass the baton. I've done so many protests. But I'm like, "Guys, you are amazing. I'm ready to pass the baton to you guys." And then I asked my seventh grader's friend, who's a "they/them", and she has to correct me all the time because I forget. Again, we're of a generation that we're not used to this language. And I said, "Can you explain to me, why is this important? Why are pronouns important to you guys?" And she says, "Well, let me ask you this. What do you identify as?" I'm a woman, a female. She's like, "Well, what if people started calling you him, he/him, whatever?" And I'm like, "That'd be weird. Would I offend you?" I'm like, "Probably." And she's like, "Well, that's... Do you get it now?" Because they identify as something else. It's not for us to understand. I mean, it's not for us to live their lives. It's their lives. We are here to protect them, to help them, to help them thrive. And it's not about us. It's about them. So if they need protection, if we need to fight for them, that's what we need to do. And as a teacher and as a mother, that's what I'm going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seles. Megan Adams.
Hey, everybody. Let's talk quick. We've got three minutes. My name's Megan Adams. I was born in Newport News, as my mother was, both at Riverside. My grandmother was born down the street at her mom's house. I want to thank you for holding this additional board meeting so quickly to address complying with the additional policy requirements passed on from the state. I also want to thank Mr. Brown, who took the time to respond to my email that I sent everyone. Also to Gary Hunter, who also responded and did the right thing by voting the way that you did. Thank you very much. I want to thank the Newport News Public Schools Administration that spoke last week. They seemed extremely compassionate and ready to tackle this new policy changes. I want to applaud all the teachers tonight that spoke up for all these children. I have a transgendered son who came out to us about six years ago when he was starting high school. And we supported him, as we do all our children. And started therapy at CHKD and then continued on with hormone therapy. And then he continued on his transition using binders. I can tell you, his high school experience was absolutely terrible. He suffered terribly from UTIs, and we spent many nights at the urgent care because of this. The ordeal with the bathroom was terrible with him at Warwick High School. Sometimes he was allowed to use the nurse's bathroom. It depended who was working. And then pretty much his entire senior year, he wasn't allowed to do that. It was terrible. It was absolutely terrible. We were all so glad that he finished high school and moved on with his adult life. Since graduation, he's furthered his transition with having his male chest reconstructive surgery and continues hormone therapy. I cannot find the words to express his transformation. His body language, his confidence levels are through the roof, and he's a completely full and vibrant person now. In regards to the privacy portion of the policy, I've got to tighten it up. I only see that if the child would like their transgender status to be kept secret from other students and their parents, the staff member has to honor that. I don't see how that affects parents' rights. That's pretty much protecting the students. I feel really sorry for these kids that don't feel they can go to their parents. A child that I had the pleasure of knowing came out to their parents in high school, their freshman year, that they identify as a "they," and they preferred girls to boys. Their parents beat them until they crawled out of their house to find help, and then their parents later abandoned them to the state. They then went into foster care, stayed with many families. Due to all this trauma, they still suffer today from PTSD. I wanted to thank the Woodside staff that collected money years ago so they could get a suit for their prom. I think if your child is keeping a secret that they feel they're transgendered from you, I think you have a bigger problem. I think that everyone really needs to just listen to their kids. I'm going to close with a caption that I read on Mr. Eli's Instagram. I'd like to close with, "To be yourself." I hope that didn't mean be yourself unless you're transgender. Good night.
Steve Stern. Steph Stern?
Yes, hello. Sorry. My handwriting is atrocious. I do apologize. Steph here. I appreciate the time you're taking and extending the time to hear from all of us. I'm a non-binary leaning masculine individual. Yes, I'm trans. I met a Newport News teacher today, and he spoke on how the treatment of trans students here is reminiscent of how the untouchables are treated in India outside of this building just this evening. Heard a lot of quoting of the Bible, so now it's my time to say one. Galatians 3:28 says, "There is no male or female." I am a previous resident of Chesapeake, one of the poorest regions in the city of South Norfolk. My child went to Norfolk Highlands Primary. I volunteered as a historian at the PTA from years 2010 to 2013. At that very school, I helped organize events and became a youth advocate to kids in my poverty-stricken neighborhood. I walked children in my neighborhood, including my own, to after-school events, clubs, because I didn't have a car, and neither of their families did. We were conveniently down the street. I became a bridge to the next generation, regardless of their gender, sexuality, race, or even religion, or disability. Led them to better appreciation and learning without judgment. To ponder on that, I am trans. But yet, I inspire our youth to want to read, to want to learn, and how to add and subtract. They asked me back then, "Are you a boy or a girl?" I responded, "I am neither." But I am a person, and that's all that matters. Wide-eyed, they smiled and they cheered. They told me, "We love you, Steph. We don't care what or who you are. You love us." Just for some background, none of these kids have parents that had any time for their education or just a hug. I gave them a safe environment, and yes, I'm trans. Heads up, I'm a prominent member of the growing nonprofit that's expanding from Fritian Beach to all of Hampton Roads. We're coming. Check out our Facebook page. Find us at the name of Fritian Beach Coalition. Thank you.
Deborah Mitchell.
Good evening, and thank you. Well, I'm very disappointed that we're back here again to revisit this issue. I have to believe that your earlier decision was well-considered and well-thought-out, and you voted along with your heart, taking into consideration your responsibility that you have to every child in the school division. Even so, I am appealing to you to stay the course. With that, a couple of things still concern me. You all were accused in the media of failing to protect the transgender child. My question is, how is allowing a child to go into the restroom, the locker room, opposite of his biological gender, protecting them? How does changing the name and the matching pronoun protect them? It seems to me it's sending them out and putting them in harm's way in their defense. My other thought was, if a teacher, and I'll call him Mr. Butler, he leaves school on Friday, and he returns on Monday announcing that he's no longer Mr. Butler, he's Mrs. Butler, and he wishes to be called a "she," and he's no longer a "he." What would the children do, and what would you do? What would prevent this, or does this policy include instructors as well? A wise man or woman looks down the road. He perceives trouble, and he avoids it. But a foolish man continues, and he's destroyed. I believe you are among the wise. There's a reason that children are given to adults and not the other way around. We are wiser. We have experience. So we protect, we guard, we instruct, we teach, and we guide. When they get out of alignment with anything, our job is to help them navigate their way back so they can be successful. The goal has to be to help the transgender children without sacrificing the well-being of all the other students. As adults, all of us have made some choices and decisions. We have regrets personally. We pray for crop failure. But this is different. This is not personal. You're making a decision that will impact every child in grades K through 12. Parents are leaving their children in your care every morning. They trust you. But if you allow Tommy to be Teresa while he's in your care, but at home and every day and on the weekend, he's still Tommy, guess what? He can be Tommy with you also. In other words, do not agree to keep this a secret, be a part of this deception, and betray the parents. Insist that they tell the truth. Is there any other situation that they will be allowed to lie about and not be in trouble? Where does this stop? We were always told when we got in trouble, "You better tell the truth." That's where the conversation started. No teacher deserves to be put in the middle of this. Know that one day, all of us will stand and give an account of everything that we've done. It's called a judgment. You will be asked, "What did you do with those children that were entrusted to you?" Individually, you'll be asked, not the board, not the representative, but what did you do? Thank you.
Sandra Tumanyella.
Thank you for being here. It is late. I'm sorry that this had to come back to a vote because I stood at the first vote. I have the advantage of probably being the oldest person in the room. I have been a guidance counselor for 40 years, 30 of them in Newport News. I've been at a variety of schools. I was in Ethiopia at the American Community School. I was in Texas. I was at Hampton Roads Academy for five years. I was at Huntington Middle School for five years, then Gilderslede. So I've been around the block a few times, and I've worked with thousands of kids. And this new situation that's been thrust on us is new. And people have said, "Well, there have been transgender students around forever." Maybe, but in all of my years, I've never heard it like this. This is just beyond crazy. And I will say that at Gilderslede, I was there my last 15 years. And the worst time for me was when the kids were going through their family life or sex ed because everybody was just really into sex. That's all they thought about, all they talked about. So I can just imagine with this kind of stuff being pushed by the state, and it's an agenda that's being pushed, so don't be confused by that. I can only imagine the conversations, and I worry about the trans kids that they'll be even more of a target because there's going to be so much attention on it. And I really think that all kids are to be protected and to be loved. And I can honestly say, I don't think there's a student that I ever had that didn't think I loved them. And I had kids with a whole lot of problems, but I would never want to usher one through their confusion. And most psychologists and psychiatrists agree that most kids go through some gender confusion as adolescents until they get it sorted out. Most of them, it's sorted out before they're adults. And I'm just worried about all this, that the schools and that society pushing this, "Choose your gender, change your gender early, take these drugs, have this surgery." Now, there may be... There are very few people who need that. There are some. And I think that we should love every person, no matter what, and that this shouldn't even be coming up. We should be talking about academics in school. A lot more time should be spent on math, science, English, social studies, on proper manners, work ethic. That's what the time needs to be spent on, and that's where we're not doing that good a job. If you look at our test scores compared to the rest of the world, we're like 45th and 70th in the different areas. So we're not doing a great job. Just saying that we passed the kids through, that doesn't mean we're doing an outstanding job. But when I was there at Gilderslede, the big push came to close the gap at that time. Then the focus was on the minorities of the whites. And the white scores were here, the blacks were here. All they wanted to do was close the gap. That didn't mean a thing. We need to love kids. God had a good plan, male, female, man, wife, to nurture the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Mio. Rose Cam.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board members, and to everyone else who's assembled. Thank you so much for being here with us on tonight and hearing us. I thank you. As a parent, I have been given an important responsibility to raise an individual as God created them to be. Children are a gift from God. He has entrusted us as parents to love God in power, in courage, and protect each one. God created all mankind, male or female, in His image created He them. Genesis 1:27. Therefore, the gender of a child was already established in Psalms 1:39-13 in the womb of the woman before birth. But as expectant parents, we are the ones waiting to know. Once the announcement is made of the gender, it becomes our obligation as parents to nurture them accordingly, to provide an environment of safe, safety, stability, encouragement, and an opportunity to experience learning while learning with love as a boy or as a girl grows, to ensure morals and values throughout their lives that will lead to exemplifying excellent character and integrity within the home, the school, the church, and the community. Today, we are discussing the topic of transgender policy for the children in our school system. The family of God, the family God created, is under attack. Just the mere fact of this dialogue on this subject is appalling to me as a born black female with Christian values, real Christian values and beliefs. This policy infringes on the protection, safety, and bodily privacy of my nieces, my nephews, and my fringe children as well. As an adult female, I am not willing to share bathroom facilities or different things like that with someone who was born a male but decided, outside the will of God, he wanted to be a female and appears in my personal space. Action promotes more perversion, including rape. All types of things could happen, and it can happen with that and without that. Instability of mind, body, and heart, and it is an abomination unto God. It is common knowledge, if you were born a male, you go to the male bathroom. If you were born a female, you go to the bathroom designated as such. This principle, we have instilled in each one of our children throughout the years. The real discrimination... The real discrimination is being mistreated, lack of equality by human, by humankind because of the color of your skin. The sovereign God created Himself and created us to be, not because I'm not satisfied with my sex or my gender.
Thank you, Ms. Cam. Robin Field?
Thank you, Board, for having me here tonight. I want to thank you and let you know that you came from a very well-respected decision on the seventeenth of August. And we're here to try to let you know that please stand your ground. As a parent and a professional, it is my choice when, if, and how I teach my children about homosexuality, bisexual, or transsexual people, or whether or not we have systemic racism in our society. These things are causing division in our society. However, I just want to say that I raise my children knowing that there are two sexes, male and female. And this is based on science. And to love one another, be kind to each other. I don't point out to be kind to the transsexual girl or the black boy because this is actually racist and bigoted speech for which hate culminates. And that's why when we put these labels on, having a special circumstance for transgenders or all the different labels we can use, that causes division. My children have learned to judge someone based on their character, not their gender or sexual preference or color. I am to teach those values, not the school. It is my child to teach the value system I think is best according to our values, not the school. If a child is not learning because you think his sexual identity is hindering this, that is a concern for the parents to seek professional counseling. Teachers are not qualified, nor have the time necessary with such a complex issue as mental health. According to the CDC, the percentage of gender dysphoria students is .06% nationally. Opening this type of information into our schools, our classes is not only counterproductive to the rest of the population in school, but it's damaging to us as a society. It will give way to other students to question their identity of which they were secure in. We value and respect everyone and we don't need to know how you identify sexually. Teachers are here to teach reading, writing, math, and science. If a child is having difficulty comprehending, maybe the teacher is not as knowledgeable to teach individual students in a different manner to help that student succeed at their fullest potential. This is what teachers should be doing. With many students falling below their capabilities and our national averages being below what we once were, it would be best if teachers and schools focused on those subjects, academics, instead of bringing confusion and convoluting the education of our children. I want to thank you, Board. I know you have a difficult job, but I hope you stand by your decision and know that we as a community respect what you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Field.
Thank you.
Tanisha Williams? All right, that was my last card. So I'll ask, are there any additional cards? Any additional cards? Please pass those forward to the clerk. Mr. Black, why don't you come forward?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I really appreciate it. I don't envy the job that you do, but you have been chosen. Joshua 24:15 tells us, "Choose you this day, who will you serve?" I would caution you to vote no on a transgender issue and a CRT, which promotes hate. I am not an oppressor. We all know there's enough hate in the world. It does not need to be taught in our schools. If you can't tell what sex you are, take your clothes off, stand in front of a mirror. Look down, you're male or female. Girls should stay with girls, boys with boys. No shared bathrooms, showers for the sake of convenience or political correctness. This all started in 1962 when they took prayer out of schools. Our parents dropped the ball by not speaking out against it. Now, about sixty years later, look at what our schools have become. Whatever happened to teaching writing, reading, writing, and arithmetic, the basics of life? I have personally seen this firsthand. The kids of today are not being taught this in school. When you have college-age kids coming to a post office and they can't even address an envelope correctly, let alone count change. I was taught this in grade school as well as how to write a letter. Later on, we were taught how to write a check. Why have we forsaken truth for untruth? You teach students about every religion but the true word of God. Don't you think it's about time we get back to basics and open the book that tells you the whole truth and not some fabrication of man's ideas? Who gave the government or anybody else the right to take parents' rights away from them? I beseech you, members of the school board, do not make a choice today that will have repercussions on your children and grandchildren. The choices you make today, you will have to live with the knowledge that you had the chance to step up and correct the wrong done many years ago. You made a decision once. Don't backpedal now and stick to your guns. You have an anti-bully policy in your schools. Why are you allowing politicians to bully you? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Are there any additional cards? Any additional cards? There being no additional cards, I want to thank the public for their time. We'll move on to tonight's agenda to a presentation by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will call Mrs. Brooks to the podium to recap the policy and procedural updates. At our last meeting, the board requested for more further detail on the procedural aspects. While the board is not, the procedure is not before the board for approval this evening, we wanted to ensure that the board had adequate information to apply to the policy that was brought before the board on Tuesday of last week. So Mrs. Brooks has further information. Our teams have met to add further Newport News guidance towards the model policy and procedure that the VDOE developed. And she will take it from here.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, and again, Dr. Parker. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening regarding the proposed policy revision and to provide additional information regarding the procedures that will work to guide the implementation of the policy. Now, the school division is committed to providing safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environments for all of our students. To that end, the revised policy and procedures address the treatment of transgender students as required by the Code of Virginia to be in place for the start of this school year. They also reflect the eight components that we are legally bound to address in keeping with the state code. Now, we've shared these eight areas with you before, but I will mention them very briefly for our audience and viewing public. The areas pertain to, first, complying with applicable state and federal nondiscrimination laws to ensure that our policies and procedures align with mandated legal requirements. Second, maintaining safe and supportive learning environments that are free from discrimination and harassment for all students. Third, preventing and responding to bullying and harassment. And as you are aware, that's an ongoing activity for our youth development department. Fourth, maintaining student records as required by law. Fifth, identifying students to the extent possible that reflects the student's expressed identity. Six, protecting student privacy and the confidentiality of sensitive information. Seven, enforcing gender-neutral dress codes. And lastly, the state code requires the school division to address student participation in gender-specific school activities and events as well as the use of school facilities. Now, to implement the General Assembly legislation, as you know, the Virginia Department of Education convened a statewide committee that worked for over eight months to review policies and resources from across the country pertaining to the treatment of transgender students in public schools. And we use that document to update the school division's procedures regarding this. Now, for many people, their gender identity matches their sex assigned at birth. For others, their gender identity does not necessarily correspond to their sex assigned at birth. So I wanted to share a working definition of transgender, which is a self-identifying term that describes a person who identifies with a gender that is different from their sex assigned at birth. Now, to comply with the legal requirements of the state code regarding the treatments of transgender students, we have updated our current policy on equal educational opportunities to add that the school division will not discriminate against any individuals based on their gender or gender identity. So our school division is committed to providing educational programs and services designed to meet the varying needs of our students to ensure that all students have safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environments. Now, last week, we shared the initial working draft of the procedure to implement the policy that was consistent with the Code of Virginia requirements and was also aligned to the Department of Education policies document. Since that time, we've worked to provide additional information on how the procedures will be carried out in our schools and in a consistent fashion with our statutory requirements. So if the policy revision is approved, we will use the procedures to develop a guidance document or handbook with more specific steps that school staff can follow. So this is a visual representation of our equal educational opportunities policy showing that we've added gender and gender identity as required by law. Now, this evening's presentation is designed to provide further clarity on the eight components that we are required to address by law. So for each component, we will have a slide on the draft school division procedure, which will demonstrate the alignment of our school division procedures with those outlined in the Virginia Department of Education model guidance document. And then we will have a draft procedure implementation slide that will address how procedures could be implemented in our schools. So upon board approval of the revised policy, JB, equal educational opportunities, a larger committee will come together to finalize a guidance document or handbook for the school division. This document will ensure that procedures are consistently implemented with fidelity and serve as a resource document for our schools. Now, I would like to briefly review each of the sections in our draft procedures that are aligned to the eight state code components and worse, to address the implementation of the law. Now, the first section is on bullying, harassment, and discrimination. And as you know, we have several policies in addition to our equal educational opportunities policy that prohibit any and all discrimination, harassment, and bullying based on an individual's actual or perceived race, color, national origin, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, or any other characteristic protected by law. And any incident or complaint of discrimination, harassment, or bullying will be given prompt attention, including investigating the incident and taking appropriate corrective action. Complaints alleging discrimination, harassment, or bullying based on a student's actual or perceived transgender status will be handled in the same manner as other discrimination and harassment complaints. The school division's Title IX coordinator will be available to hear concerns from students or parents when complaints are not resolved at the school level. So in Newport News Public Schools, we will review other school board policies to ensure compliance with state and federal laws. And we will also work on our equity policy that will be aligned to our strategic plan, which is JOURNEY 2025. Now, for our students and families, we will continue to include bullying prevention as part of our character education programs. And we will ensure that our Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook prohibits bullying and includes prevention and intervention protocols. Our youth development department will continue its focus on bullying prevention as well. Now, to handle complaints or allegations regarding discrimination on the basis of an individual's gender identity, the school division will use our current grievance procedure, which includes informal and formal processes to ensure that any complaints filed are handled according to the statutory guidelines of Title IX. When a complaint is filed, it will be thoroughly investigated and any recommended corrective action will be taken. Now, our second section addresses student privacy and confidentiality. All school staff must adhere to the legal standards of confidentiality relating to information about a student's transgender status, legal name, or gender assigned at birth. And adhering to confidentiality, school employees will treat information related to a student's transgender status as being particularly sensitive and will not disclose the student's status to other students and parents and only disclose it to other school employees when there is a legitimate, excuse me, educational interest. The student and/or the parent may choose to allow greater disclosure in their discretion. So in terms of implementation, our school staff will be encouraged to refer students to licensed mental health professionals on our staff, such as our licensed clinical social workers who are trained to address the social-emotional needs of students and families and to handle sensitive and confidential information in a safe and supportive way. To support students in communicating challenging information with families, train NMPS staff will exercise empathy, patience, and understanding, provide a safe and protective environment for students to share their concerns as it relates to communicating with families, and offer to schedule the meeting date and time and to be present during the conversation with families. Now, if a student prefers to facilitate a conversation with their family members on their own, staff members trained to engage parents around sensitive issues will work with students on strategies for communicating with their family members. Now, this may include a session to allow students to role-play different responses and scenarios, but in a safe space. As always, our school division will remain focused on safety, on the safety, social-emotional well-being, and the confidentiality of students while remaining responsive and considerate of the needs of our families. Now, regarding the identification of students, the draft procedure states that schools will allow students to assert a name and gender pronouns that reflect their gender identity without substantiating evidence or any required minimum duration of the expressed gender identity. And as requested, school staff will address the student using the asserted name and pronouns that corresponds to the student's gender identity. So as our trained mental health professionals work with students in expressing their identity, schools will allow students to discuss and express their gender identity openly and decide when to share information, with whom, and how much to share. Schools will allow students to be addressed by the name and pronouns that correspond to their gender identity. Now, to do this, a court-ordered name change is not required by law and the student will not need to change their official records. However, the school division will maintain a permanent record for each student that includes the student's legal name and gender for use on standardized tests or reports to the Virginia Department of Education. to the Virginia Department of Education. Now, next is the section regarding school records. And I referenced some of this information before when I talked about student identification because they work very closely together. Now, according to the draft procedures, the school division will maintain a record that includes the student's legal name and sex assigned at birth and may be required to use or report the legal name and sex assigned at birth in some situations, such as for standardized testing. And as requested, schools will use the student's asserted name or gender on some school documents, such as student work. Now, however, a student's name and gender designation on official permanent records will be changed only if it's verified with the submission of a legal document, such as a birth certificate, a passport, or a court order. So again, in support of a student's gender identity, a legal document will not be required for students who choose to use their asserted name or gender on some school's documents, such as student work. And our school division will maintain a permanent record for each student, as I mentioned before, that includes their legal name and their gender, and will only change that when the appropriate legal documents are provided. Now, our next section is on student dress. According to our school division procedure, dress and grooming codes will be written without limits on gender expectations. Students have a right to dress in a manner that is consistent with their gender identity or gender expression. Schools will administer and enforce dress and grooming codes consistently across the student body, regardless of actual or perceived gender identity or gender expression. Requirements for attire for school-related programs and activities and events will be gender-neutral. So in keeping with the procedures, student dress codes will be gender-neutral or without reference to gender-specific attire for classrooms, for classrooms and school-related programs, activities, and events. So for example, schools may require formal attire for students participating in a concert, but will not specify that girls must wear dresses and boys must wear ties. Now, our school leadership staff has already conformed our student dress codes in the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook to reflect the state requirements and will work to ensure that other documents, such as our school board policy on student dress, will conform to those laws as well. Now, next, according to our draft procedures on access to activities, schools will eliminate or reduce the practice of segregating students by gender to the extent possible, as long as there is an educational purpose. For example, an organization like Girls Who Codes works to address the underrepresentation of females in coding careers. So this would serve as an educational purpose. Now, for any school program, event, or activity, including extracurricular activities that are segregated by gender, the school division will allow students to participate in a manner that is consistent with their gender identity. Now, in terms of athletic participation that is regulated by the Virginia High School League or VHSL, as well as middle school activities, all of those activities will be in compliance with the policies and rules that are outlined by the VHSL. Now, in terms of our implementation and regarding access to activities, the school division, as I mentioned, for athletics, will follow the Virginia High School League Regulations Regarding Middle and High School Athletics. And as previously mentioned, students will have the opportunity to participate in activities and programs in a manner that is consistent with their gender identity, regardless of the gender listed on their student permanent records. Now, the next section addresses access to facilities with the understanding that all students are entitled to have access to restrooms, locker rooms, and changing facilities that are safe, sanitary, and adequate so that they can comfortably and fully engage in their school activities and programs. So to this end, schools that maintain single-user, gender-inclusive restroom or locker room facilities may allow student access but not mandate use. So upon request, such facilities or reasonable alternatives will be made available to any student, any student who seeks privacy. And any options offered will be non-stigmatizing and minimize loss of instructional time. And access to facilities such as restrooms and locker rooms that correspond to a student's gender identity will be available to all students. Now, in implementing this procedure in our school division, students will be allowed to use the same restroom facilities as their peers that corresponds to the student's gender identity unless the student requests alternative accommodations. Our school staff will identify single-user, gender-neutral restrooms at each school with specific signage indicating that restrooms are available to students. Restrooms will be accessible to students without use of special codes or keys, and all students will be advised of the location and the availability of these facilities. For a locker room, students will be allowed to use the same facilities as their peers that corresponds to the student's gender identity unless the student requests alternative accommodations. Now, although NMPS students are not required to dress out to participate in physical education, accommodations will be provided for any students who wish to dress out for PE. Now, the last of the eight sections addresses professional development and training. All school mental health professionals will be trained annually on topics relating to LGBTQ plus students, including the safety and support for these students. Professional development for other school division staff will be provided in compliance with the Virginia Department of Education Guidance Documents. Now, in terms of specific training, our mental health professionals will receive training courses in the areas of trauma, child protective services, reporting protocols, suicide intervention and prevention protocols, and critical incident response. Coursework on inclusivity will be added to training requirements for all mental health professionals. The goal of professional development for all staff is to ensure that they understand the rights of all students to have safe learning environments and the school board's expectations regarding the treatment of transgender students. Now, professional learning components may overlap with other or intersect with other professional learning topics, such as bullying prevention, mental health awareness and suicide prevention, equity, positive school environment, or trauma-sensitive practices. So the school division will coordinate the various professional development activities for consistency. So in terms of our next step, we are requesting your approval of the revision to the equal opportunities, educational opportunities policy this evening. Next, as I mentioned earlier, once the policy is approved, we will use the procedures to develop a guidance document or handbook with best practices and more specific steps that school staff can follow. So and once again, I would like to share this representation of our equal educational opportunities policy, showing how we have added gender and gender identity as required by law. And so this concludes my report this evening. And joining me to respond to questions are some of the experts who are currently working in the areas that we have addressed, those eight areas in the draft procedures. And they are Mrs. Linda Askew, who is our student support supervisor, Mr. Wade Beverly, who is our plant services executive director, Mrs. Nina Ferris, our human resources director, Dr. Shamika Gerald, who is our Director of Equity Assessment and Strategic Operations, Mrs. Amy Jones is here, our health and PE supervisor, Mr. Tashan Ophelia, our employee relations coordinator, Dr. Jaron Ransom, our youth development supervisor, and Mr. Lynn Wallen, our director of legal services. So as you can see, it takes a team to do this work, and we will continue to work together to complete and meet the needs of our school staff. So thank you.
All right, similar as we did last time, let's go one question at a time, if there are questions. And I'll ask the board, is there any questions at this time?
I have a couple very some basic questions, I think. We're going to follow the Virginia High School League policy. I know it changed several years back. Is it, if it can anyone speak to what the current Virginia High School League's policy is with regard to transgender students participating in sports?
Yeah, they have several steps that you must follow if you want to participate in terms of your gender identity. And it's a process that parents have to complete, so I can provide that information to you in detail. But it's a detailed process, and it also has an appeal process as well. So it's written out very thoroughly, but it's like a three-step process that students and their families have to follow to make that request.
Okay, and let's just go around it. Are there any other questions from other board members at this time? All right, Ms. Amy, please go ahead. Any other questions?
Oh, I just wanted to ask this JICA, the student dress in italics, is that new?
No, in fact, that that's a standing policy that we've had for a while.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I got one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
I don't know if anyone here can answer it, but the Virginia High School League, right, athletics?
Yes.
It appears that they are the only, I guess, organization that didn't have a dog in this fight or something, that didn't say how they agree, yes or no, or, you know, there was a lot of changes. But it specifically said, we don't want, you know, the kids to choose a particular sport that they might want to choose.
Right, but now they do have a process. If you want to participate in this sport in accordance to your gender identity, there is a process that parents and students must follow to make that request to the Virginia High School League.
Do we have any history on that?
I am.
That we know of, any other school division or this school division?
That has undergone that process? I am not aware. I don't know if any of my colleagues are. Dr. Gerald, do you mean of any other students who have partitioned?
You're right.
To use that process? I'm not aware.
Okay.
Oh. We're adding Mr. Wright to our team.
All right.
Good evening, Board. We're awaiting information from the Virginia High School League on where they stand and or any processes the school divisions would need to use if they were to receive requests as such. At this time, we do not have any information from the Virginia High School League.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? All right, so with that, then now we'll ask, is there any motion to reconsider?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reconsider the revised policy JB Educational Opportunities for Students.
All right. We've heard a first, is there a second?
A second.
All right, second from Dr. Best. Any, any discussion?
You mean remarks?
Any remarks, yes, any remarks. Dr. Best, you go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. In July 2018, as a school board member, I took an oath to uphold the laws and constitution of Virginia. Although I was elected from the South District, I am entrusted to uphold my responsibilities as it relates to a public free education for all children in the city of Newport News. On August 17th, the board was charged to vote on the matter of the Equal Education Opportunities Policy JB. To clarify, I had and I have no problem with voting yes to this policy. For days leading up to this vote, I had questions that were not answered to my satisfaction regarding the procedures as it relates to the policy. One question in particular I asked was if we could vote on the policy without these procedures. The answer was no, we will be opening ourselves up for a lawsuit. If you recall, I was that board member who abstained from voting. At that time, the rationale in my mind was that I needed more information, clarification, and was just not comfortable with some aspects of the procedure. In addition, the motion was already defeated, having four votes against before my name was even called. One of my fellow board members described it as taking the easy way. When I first heard that, I was somewhat offended. But upon further self-reflection, that assessment was correct. By abstaining, I did not lend my voice to the matter at hand, which is exactly what I was elected to do. That evening, my assignment was to vote on the policy. A policy that in essence said, no student in Newport News Public Schools will be discriminated against. A policy that is Virginia law. A policy we are ordered to have in effect by the opening of school. When I did not vote, I let down my constituents and every student in Newport News Public Schools. We are a school division that encourages every student to register to vote as soon as they are eligible and to exercise their right to vote every available opportunity they have. To you, I apologize. When I did not vote, those in opposition to this policy may have been happy, but to transgenders, their supporters, students, parents, relatives, classmates, friends, and employees, it felt like a punch in the stomach. And one described it as, I have felt very depressed since watching the previous board meeting. But from watching it and other events unfold, I also can't help but realize the brutal unfairness of expecting children to bear all of the burden for all of the misinformed rage directed at them for being different. And if even one transgender student went to sleep that night believing that they would not receive equal protection in Newport News Public Schools, to you and to your supporters, I sincerely apologize. As for the matter at hand, again, our task as a board is to vote on the policy, and that is exactly what I intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Mr. Ely.
I just want to take this time to thank all the presenters. Thank everyone who came out to spoke to speak tonight. Your voices were definitely heard. I definitely appreciate you. And like Dr. Best said, we as a school board is here by law to vote on a policy. We don't have anything to do with the procedure. The procedure is set by the school board and his staff. And by policy in the state of Virginia, we have to pass law stating that we would not discriminate, not against transgenders, but discriminate against anybody in our school division. And I definitely understand that a lot of people have concerns tonight, but those concerns started in July, when those bills should pass. And as school board members, we must uphold the law and follow the law. If we're not complying with the law, we're breaking the rules. The same rule of no drinking and driving, the same rule of no gun-free schools. There's a lot of laws that are out here, and we must follow them, and we must follow this law too. I just want to take this time to thank everyone who spoke tonight, thank the school board for letting me do virtual, and just thank all the citizens of Newport News for having our back and listening to that. We will continue to do the right thing and make sure Newport News move in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Ms. Amy.
Oh, sure. Jevi, we're going back and forth. Thank you, and thank you to everybody who came out and shared your thoughts with us. You know, as I mentioned last week, and we've discussed, and it remains true today, we're voting on a policy, but the policy needs to go together with a procedure because the policy change is very, very minimal. What the model policy is put forth by the Virginia Department of Education is much more detailed, and we've pushed that to the procedures. So I think as far as compliance, we are taking a vote on the policy and the procedures if we want to consider ourselves in compliance. The proposed procedures have been revised. We got them about 24 hours ago, and there's a lot of change, a lot of yellow, which, you know, although it is legal that we get it at the same time, the public gets it, even though it's short notice, it doesn't provide much time for the board or the public to review and consider it, which concerns me. Although the time was short, I did take the time to review the revised documents. The revisions do not resolve the legal, the legal concern. The revisions do not resolve the legal, the legal concerns I articulated last week, which ironically did not include bathrooms. In fact, some changes gave me greater pause for concern. And in hearing Mr. Grimm's speech, I appreciate him coming down and speaking, the liability risk is significant if we get it wrong on either side. If we get it wrong with respect to discrimination, if we get it wrong with respect to perhaps parent or staff legal rights, constitutional rights. And given the way the litigation went and the way it was dismissed for lack of standing, I'm not convinced the model policy as structured is free of concern. So I, as a board member for the school system, I feel an obligation to look at the model policy to see what we might be getting into. My concerns remain that the procedures, which will be implemented, I know they're draft, but with several iterations, this hasn't changed, does still provide an opportunity for parents to be not informed of important issues facing their children. The added language still, in the end, allows the division to treat the students one way and communicate with parents another way. You know, looking at some of the best practices and how the process, possibly professional counseling, suggesting that first before we get into identity at a school level would be a better approach, but we are where we are with the model policy. I noted in the student identification section, we still have, we note that the division, if it gets to an impasse, must decide whether to respect the students' request or the parents' wishes. And our, and request and wish, wishes are, are two different words, and I think it kind of suggests where we're focusing on the students when the parents may have legal concerns with, with how their students identify and what they're teaching in the home and what's being taught at school. You know, parents, students are minors, they're legally minors, they're legally not able to enter into a contract to buy a car. And we're talking about not discussing something very significant and concerning and important in a child's life. If there is concerns about abuse, we have been, we have handled that, maybe we look at our current policies for how we handle that, and we add this to, to the list of if an issue comes up, we've got a process in place, but we're just putting a separate policy in without looking at our other policies that maybe quite possibly may not mesh well with this new one. The vagueness as far as gender identity, technically the wording still hasn't been clarified or made more specific. So I am concerned with the vagueness, how that applies on a human resources level. I am concerned with, with the procedures being in a way that parents may not be informed of what's going on with their children. And those are laws in place too, the minority of children. They're, they're so important that we even have special laws that allow a pregnant minor to access medical care for herself and her unborn child. Otherwise, it would be her parents that would decide the medical care for her. So I think that is a very important distinction that I would feel more comfortable if that were ironed out in the procedures before we're asked to vote on the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Amon. Mr. Hunter?
Put it up.
Okay, Mr. Harris?
No comment.
Madam Vice Chair?
I just want to thank everyone who took time to come out this evening to share your thoughts and concerns regarding the policy that we have before us. Understand the passion and appreciate the decorum for this evening. This is Newport News. I'd like to extend sincere gratitude to Dr. Parker and his team. We're preparing presentation for our review in the midst of preparing for students' return in just a few days. And the policy that we have before us this evening is an important one. The hearts and minds of our students are important. I have sworn an oath to foster an equitable, safe, and educationally enriched environment for all students. This policy supports that oath, and my oath shall support this policy. Educational programs and services should be designed to meet the varying needs of all students and will not discriminate against an individual for the reason of race, color, national origin, sex, creed, marital status, age, pregnancy, sexual orientation, sexual identity, gender, gender identity, or disability in any of our programs or activities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I'll try to be brief. Got a lot of, certainly got a lot of phone calls and emails in the, in the last week. And I would say that I've experienced a significant amount of prejudice and bullying against me. So let me just, I'll just share briefly because there's a lot of comments about me not knowing people in the LGBTQ plus community, which is completely false, couldn't be more further from the truth. I would dare say that I probably have more LGBTQ plus friends than just about anybody having grown up near San Francisco, where I'm from and born and raised. And I do, do know a trans male. And I emphasize the word, did know a trans male. Did know because that friend killed himself. Did know because that friend regretted making a transition from female to male. It, and this is in their words, ruined their life. This was, in their experience, led them to be homebound, homebound because of the shame, and homebound because of how they felt. And this was, this is in California where there's no discrimination, where there's not really anyone who's going to look at you funny, where this was the own, their own personal hell that they felt that they were in. And I said to myself at that time that I'm going to make sure that I represent that friend. All right, so when people in the community have attacked me personally, called me names, said I was a bigot and I shouldn't be the, the chair of the board because I have a religious point of view, those, those calls were unfair, just as, just as you're asking for tolerance. I, I do feel that there was a lot of intolerance expressed towards me in the last week, and I, and I, and I wish it wasn't so, but it is. So now, in my opinion, the board has failed to live up to the obligation that we established with our vote on August seventeenth. On August seventeenth, the board voted five to one, five to one, that we owe the community additional work in the form of a more tailored and compassionate local policy that would protect the rights of transgender students. Yet tonight, here we are in a redo. Should this board reverse itself on a five to one decision, it will renege on the promise that we made. Should the board reverse itself from such an overwhelming majority, I fear that it's going to show that the word of the school board has little to no meaning. In less than a week, all right, I guess I'd say it's just a little more than a week, less than ten days, the board's reversing itself. And, and if we do this tonight, should we have another vote next week? This is just, in my opinion, a bad way to do business. And I've, I've said as much, and I want to make sure I say that on the record, this is not the way to do business. You don't revote on something that you've already done. You go back and do the work. And what we said that last Tuesday on the seventeenth was that we would do the work to work on a local policy. Yet here we are not doing that and talking about adopting the VDOE model policy. And what's changed in less than ten days since our vote? Nothing. Were any of your concerns on the implementation of Policy JB resolved? No, they were not because nothing's changed. And yet, some of you are here to reverse yourselves anyways, and that's why we're here tonight. So I've heard from a lot of citizens, and many of them are confused as to what the controversy is. So let me just please clarify the controversy as I see it from my perspective. This is not about bathrooms. Students can use bathrooms of their choice in Newport News Public Schools and have been able to do so for years. This is not about bathrooms. There's a lot of problems with the VDOE model policy, and I'm not going to try to list them all tonight. I'm just going to talk about the most egregious one that I find, and it's prejudice. Prejudice against all teachers and prejudice against all parents. The VDOE model policy asserts that the only way any teacher is going to use the preferred pronouns of a student is through the coercion of firing them. It's not enough for a student to simply ask nicely. It has to be in their contract that we're going to fire them. If you vote for this tonight, you're affirming the prejudice of the VDOE stance against our teachers. I ask my fellow board members to contemplate ownership of that prejudice because when you vote for it, you're going to own it. The VDOE model policy prejudges every parent as a child abuser. Every parent. The VDOE prejudges parents as so abusive that boards must keep their child's gender identity secret from them. No exceptions. Do you think parents want us to keep secrets from them? Are we really going to keep secret files on people's kids and not tell their parents? As my fellow board members, do you truly think the VDOE's prejudice is the only way, the only way to ensure transgender rights, when we have a path before us that we could move forward with a local policy? Is this the only way? Do you really think that the only way, the only way to keep a child safe is to betray the trust that parents grant us to educate their kids? And notice that I said, "grant us." The kids don't belong to the school board. You did not birth any of these children, and you don't raise them. Parents do that and not you. The board would do well to remember that fact. I refuse to believe that prejudice intolerance for the sake of tolerance is necessary. I refuse to believe that prejudice intolerance is the only way to support transgender students. I instead believe that we should author a local policy that will put transgender students protections in place, and I extend that invitation again to the rest of the board to engage in that work, to get the work done. Revoting tonight will break your word in support of prejudice, and I don't think it's a solution. But with that, Madam Court, would you please call a roll?
There hasn't been a motion made yet, has it?
There's a final motion.
Your motion is to bring it back, is it, back to action?
Okay.
It's a motion to reconsider the revised policy JB Equal Educational Opportunities.
That's-
That's correct. There was a motion by the Vice Chair.
Yep.
With Surles Law, second with Dr. Best.
Dr. Best, so now we're calling the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Against.
Mr. Hunter?
For.
Mrs. Surles Law?
For.
Mrs. Amon?
Against.
Dr. Best?
For.
Mr. Ely?
For.
Mr. Brown?
Against.
Motion passes for three to reconsider the revised policy JB Equal Educational Opportunities.
All right, at this time, we'll have an opportunity for school board member comments.
Uh, well, Mr. Brown, that was a motion to reconsider the policy. You have to now actually vote on the policy.
Okay, vote on the, on, on adoption of the policy. So we've now had a motion to reconsider. Is there a motion to adopt the policy?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, there is a motion to adopt the policy that's on the floor.
Is there a second? Second. All right, any further discussion?
Who was the second?
Second for Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All right, there being none, Madam Court, please call a roll.
Mr. Harris?
Against.
Mr. Hunter?
For.
Mrs. Surles Law?
For.
Mrs. Amon?
Against.
Dr. Best?
For.
Mr. Ely?
For.
Mr. Brown?
Against.
Motion passes. I'm sorry, I have Harris's no, Amon has no, oh, Mr. Brown. Okay, so motion passes for three.
So we'll now move on to matters by the school board, opportunity to, for school board members to make comments. We'll start with Dr. Best.
Good evening again, and I would also like to thank the staff and Dr. Parker for your hard work. I would like to thank all of the public that came out to comment, and especially to the teachers and our students. I'm wishing everyone a great school year, and I'm looking forward to exciting things this year. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Amon?
Just again, thank you everyone for coming out. There was a big crowd, many opinions, and I think we did a great job of expressing them in a great Newport News way, so thank you.
All right, Mr. Ely?
I just want to thank everybody once again for coming out and tuning in with us. And like so many board members said before, the, the proposed plan was from, it was the law, and we have to follow the law. And if you want to have a bigger voice, you need to talk to your congressman, talk to your legislators about what you want to see far as before bills being passed. But we have to follow the law, and tonight was, um, was us following the law before school passed. There was a lot of stuff in the policy that I don't agree with, but we have to pass a law, and we have to make sure we don't discriminate against any student in this, in the state, and especially in the city of Newport News.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you.
Oh, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. And just want to thank just the public, you know, for courteous, and they're really speaking their mind. And again, we're here to support all students, and that's all we really wanted to do. And that's my vote last week, and my vote's again today. And that's what you guys elected me for, for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Harris?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Dr. Parker and his staff. I know it's been a long ten days, and we're proud of that. You all put a lot of work in, and I appreciate that. I know situations like this sometimes brings conflict, but, you know, this is democracy. You know, sometimes at its best and sometimes at its worst. I want to thank the public for coming and speaking on this matter. I just say I wish they also would come to speak on other matters, domain to the school business, educating our kids and safety and, and teachers' pay and things of this nature as well. It is also important. I guess having, you know, a military background and following orders and things of this nature. But I guess when you get elected, you are, you take all of that in, but at the same time, it's still just you and your vote and your conviction. I'm not the one to point fingers and say what was bad, or, you know, who sent us this, or who wrote that bill, or whatever the case may be. You know, I stand on my vote, and I have to stand on that, and I have constituents that, you know, that have, you know, let me know, eyes away. But what I can say is that this process starts sometimes here and go forward, and sometimes the process starts there and come down. I just ask that every citizen make sure they participate in this process regardless of where I sat. And I think, I think you're better able to understand from this perspective anyway what we had to deal with. But again, thank you for coming out, participating. Now again, staff, I really appreciate all the hard work. Dr. Parker keeps us up to date, and he also let us know how hard you are working. And he, he's always been a buffer between school board and, and you all. And thank goodness, you know, I'm not one of the ones that issue tasks, so you don't have to worry about me because I understand. But I know, appreciate all the hard work, and I know this school division would do the right thing, whether through the policy and it definitely procedures to ensure every child is, is protected and safe. Again, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Madam Vice Chair?
Just want to reiterate as before, just the appreciation of the community coming out. It is important. We have had so many calls, so many emails, as well as the display tonight and on the seventeenth. So thank you for that. And Dr. Parker, your team is phenomenal. And moving into getting ready to get students back in school in a few days here, you know, best, best wishes. But I know that you guys will do a phenomenal job. So the board's responsibility is to vote policy, period. We trust that the division, the district, will implement the policy in earnest and in truth, and that it can be changed and it can be used best practices as you explore and go for, forward, especially with new policy. So that's where, that's where we lie right now. We voted the policy, we did what we needed to do to be compliant in the state. But the way we interpret that policy really still is on us to be able to meet the needs of our students. And as I said on the seventeenth- said on the seventeenth, I trust Dr. Parker and his team fully to be able to articulate this policy for the best use and the best purpose of our students. So thank you all very, very much.
Well, thank you all for spending your evening with us, and I do want to thank all of the public that came out and spoke. We had over fifty-four cards, and I want to thank each and every one of you for representing yourselves civilly and expressing your opinion. Very excited about school getting started now. So now this, this business is behind us, and it's time to get school started. I know that Dr. Parker is planning a Facebook Live session early next week to answer your question. So then I, I know that with all this going on, there is still a lot of work to be done for getting school started. A lot of parents have a lot of questions about how operations are going to go for the start of school. So I want you to watch our website, please, and, and make sure you tune into that Facebook Live session. We also have the state of the schools coming up. It's a lot of great work has been done, and we have a lot of great work to feature for the public to let them know the good work that we are doing. And so the state of the schools is going to be, I believe it's August the thirtieth.
August thirtieth, sir.
August thirtieth. And so please watch that online. So many amount of work has gone into showcasing the great work that has been done in Newport News Public Schools even during the pandemic. So with that, we want to thank you all again for coming out, and we will see you again September nineteenth.